To order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of September 24th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez. Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Present.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley. Botra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mayhan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Today's invocation will be provided by the Lohcahi Polynesian Dance Group, and Councilmember Candelaus will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Tuesday, everybody. I'm super excited to introduce a dynamic performance for our last invocation of September. Today, we welcome the Lohcahi Polynesian Dance Group. They are a local dance group whose mission is to provide an activity for students of all ages to progress and grow through the arts of Polynesian culture. What I particularly love is their focus to promote the culture and bond with each other, family, and our community. They have danced all over the Bay Area, in addition to the special invitations to perform at Disneyland, Disney World, and on TV on America's Got Talent. Isn't that awesome? We're in for a special treat. Their name, Lohcahi, translates to unity or harmony in Native Hawaiian, values that resonate with our diverse community right here in San Jose and in Council District 8. I am proud that my district and our entire city, quite frankly, embraces and celebrates our cultural diversity, and today's performance is a reflection of that spirit. The Lohcahi Polynesian Dance Group brings to life the beauty, strength, and grace of Polynesian traditions, offering us a reminder of the rich cultures that make our city so unique. It is with great excitement and gratitude that I welcome the Lohcahi Polynesian Dance Group for today's invocation.
So, Mayor, now that we all miss Hawaii, we can commence the council meeting.
We'll be daydreaming through the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you again to the Lohcahi Polynesian... Lohcahi. How did I...? I said it wrong, didn't I, Councilmember? Lohcahi. Thank you, Polynesian Dance Group. That was very beautiful. We are on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Torres, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize Alfredo Diaz.
If my amazing Latino colleagues on the council can come on down to honor Alfredo Diaz, and then I'm going to ask my colleagues at the end to come on down as well, since we have a legend in our chambers today. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we're honoring Alfredo Diaz and his lovely wife, Maria, on behalf of the Syndicate Council to celebrate his extraordinary legacy and incredible work running Diaz Menswear. First opening its doors in 1985, Diaz Menswear had a profound impact on our downtown and throughout the city of San Jose and its residents. Diaz Menswear has served generations of families, standing by them during life's significant moments, graduations, weddings, celebrations. Alfredo has woven himself into the very fabric of our community, making his mark on countless lives. Alfredo's charisma and dedication drew customers from all over San Jose, and very famous ones as well, to the Bay Area, offering them not just products, but unforgettable experiences. Moreover, his commitment to supporting our local economy has reinforced the importance of shopping locally, contributing to the vibrancy of downtown San Jose and driving its economic growth. We sure do miss him on East Santa Clara Street. As we honor Alfredo today, let's recognize him as a true legend of San Jose. His dedication will inspire future generations, reminding us all of the power of community and entrepreneurship. Thank you, Alfredo, for your incredible legacy, and I hope that you continue to enjoy retirement. So with that, Mr. Alfredo.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to start by thanking the City Council and the city of San Jose for this amazing honor. This honor really means a lot to my family and myself. I always had a dream to open my own men's clothing store in downtown San Jose, and when the opportunity came along, I took it. It was forty wonderful, amazing, and happy years, and I don't regret any minute of it. It has been a wonderful ride, and I appreciate everyone who has helped me to get to this point, retirement. I would like to thank my wonderful and loyal customers that supported me for forty years. Without them, this would not have been possible. About all, I would like to thank my beautiful wife and my amazing son and daughters, and the smallest employee above all, my granddaughter, Madeline. With their love, sacrifice, and support, they made my dream of owning a retail store in downtown San Jose a reality. I want to thank you once again for this recognition, Alfredo. Thank you all.
If his family can come on down too, extended family as well. Oh yeah. And Mayor, please present the commendation to Mr. Alfredo and Maria.
All right, Councilwoman Candelaus, please stay here. We will recognize the Evergreen Leadership Neighborhood Association. We'll invite them to come on down.
All right, today, we are recognizing an amazing group of individuals who have greatly impacted our District 8 community, the Evergreen Leadership Neighborhood Association, or the ELNA. We started off as just a small group of a few neighbors who wanted to do more for their community and lend a hand, quickly grew with new neighbors from various neighborhoods throughout District 8, including Grossbeck, Norwood, Hayden Glen, Pleasant Hills, and Quimby. One of ELNA's first events was a holiday party at Valley Vista Elementary School with families across the district. Many of the parents at the event were ecstatic to learn about the collaboration from so many neighborhoods, that only after a few months, their membership saw a significant increase in members. Over the years, they've continued to host many family-oriented events, including paint nights, ice cream socials, and national night outs. The best part of their approach was their commitment to meet neighbors where they lived, hosting events on a rotating basis on different blocks and parks. They are the perfect example of what happens when neighbors mobilize to create stronger neighborhoods. Not only do they bring together the community for community building, they also help to organize a community needs assessment for Grossbeck Hill Park that provided recommendations to the city for safer crossings, reoccurring cleanups, and updated playground equipment, and have been a strong voice for informing neighbors about local community needs around Lake Cunningham Regional Park. I look forward to continuing to support the Evergreen Leadership Neighborhood Association, and am hopeful that their work can inspire new leaders to help push in our mission to create stronger neighborhoods. None of this would have been possible without the dedication of the board, whom I've had the privilege of joining me today, as well as former board member Patricia Mendoza, who's also in the chamber. Thank you, Janet, Daniel, and Norma for your dedication. I will now hand it over the mic to ELNA President Janet Holt to share a few words before the mayor presents the commendation. Janet, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Councilperson Candelaus. We really appreciate this. First, I'd like to introduce Norma Alvarez, our vice president, and Daniel De La Rosa, his wife couldn't be here today, Mika. She's teaching at school, but thank you for joining us. And, yeah, this is embarrassing. I did obtain this Evergreen Leadership Neighborhood Association through some really wise and wonderful leaders, and became president a couple of years ago. So I was handed off some pretty awesome things, but also had to fill in some pretty big shoes. I want to say that pretty much everything he said, all the work that we do, we may be small in terms of board members and members, but we are mighty. We do get a lot done, and I just want to thank the members, the board members, and the families. These folks are mothers and working folks, and they dedicate a lot of their other time to this type of volunteerism. You know, one of the things that we just really push and feel very strong about is the safety in children and families. And at our national night out this year, we had a really wonderful one. It was on the street. Councilperson Candelaus did conduct a small workshop, basketball for the kids, and that was pretty cute. But it was fun. But what I want to say is, we were just about to finish up the NNO night, and a neighbor came up and said, hey, you know what? The children want to do a special cultural dance for you guys. And we're like, really? Okay, cool. So someone gathered up the microphone, somebody gathered up the speaker, and off they went. And that was probably just filled my heart and the rest of our hearts, because they knew it was a safe space, they really wanted to do this for us, and it was just very meaningful. So, thank you for this award.
All right, we are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Not seeing any. Today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Chris Esparza, who passed away on August 4th of this year. I did not have the opportunity to spend a lot of time with Chris, but I did get to see him in a handful of community and neighborhood meetings, and just saw his incredible passion for our community and how hard he worked to try to envision and bring about a better future for all of our residents. Chris was a San Jose native who, for the past thirty-five years, worked to bring vibrancy to our downtown. He owned and operated a number of restaurants, bars, and clubs that offered third spaces, or places where people could enjoy themselves outside of their work and home. Many credit Chris with helping to make the Sofa District into a nightlife destination in the 90s. In addition to being a fixture of San Jose culture, Chris was also the Community Development Director for the School of Arts and Culture at Mexican Heritage Plaza, making it a space where communities could have meetings and cultural events that brought the community together. Chris's memory lives on, and his legacy in San Jose will be forever lasting. And I want to turn things over to my colleague, Councilmember Torres, to say a bit more about Chris's life and impact before, I believe, we hear from family. Councilmember?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Today, we are here to honor Chris Esparza, a legend of San Jose, the pillar of our community, and the man who never stopped believing, and who believed in so many artists in our local community. Chris Esparza was defined in every aspect of San Jose, whether it came down to the arts, restaurants, music, events. Right? We can credit Chris for so many of the amazing downtown festivals and east side festivals that we have. Again, he was a true supporter and hero of our local arts. He launched Vanguard Nightclubs, restaurants, bands, parties, and events, all to keep San Jose a thriving and memorable place for thirty-five years. His transformation of the Mexican Heritage Plaza is one of the most remarkable things anybody could accomplish. Chris had the most amazing and sincere spirit, and his enormous impact on the city will never be forgotten. We will forever have and honor his memory. And since his passing, I've attended many events, and not only Mexican Heritage Plaza, but our beautiful downtown San Jose, and you could see Chris Esparza. You could see his heart and soul, and what he poured into our downtown, and he is now with us in spirit. And now, I pass it over to his wife, Pilar, and his daughter, Olivia.
Thank you, Omar, and thank you, San Jose City Council, for having us and giving us this opportunity to remember my dear husband and Olivia's dear father. My husband, Chris Esparza, absolutely loved San Jose. Chris lived most of his adult life in downtown, which we both value, as being part of the arts and civic center of the city. He did spend time, both traveling and living in Europe in his early twenties, as well as lived in San Francisco for a short time. But his desire was to return to San Jose and bring with him all that he learned about social and civic engagement from these cultural centers. And really, whenever he heard about a fun event happening somewhere in the world, he began to see how some aspect of it could be brought back here. From speakeasies and hip bars, musical venues and porch festivals, Chris envisioned how he could create some of that type of magic right here in San Jose. With his company, Giant Creative Services, he produced many of these events, music concerts and festivals. But Chris did not work alone, and he always knew that collaboration and tenacity were integral components to the work he wanted to do in his hometown. Chris was also a businessman, and he worked tirelessly to integrate his sense of joy and community engagement with the business ventures he took on. From the bars he helped establish, such as Ajax and Fuel 44, to the restaurants, such as the Negley Park Garage and the Blackbird Tavern, it was essential for him to realize his vision of creating social spaces where communities could engage centered around connection, music, and good food. For downtown, although not with some resistance and challenges, Winter Wonderland and the carnival rides that today are part of the Christmas holiday downtown experience was another brainchild of Chris's. About fifteen years ago, Chris was asked to serve on a committee to help re-envision the Mexican Heritage Plaza in East San Jose, helping to transform it into the School of Arts and Culture at La Plaza. Although he lamented that he could not be as active in downtown, of the downtown core, he found a significant role in the transformation of MHP. His creativity, his many years of experience working with city and county bureaucracy, his collaborations with nonprofits and other businesses were the perfect combination of skills to help him serve on the School of Arts and Culture team. He thrived there, and with deep personal satisfaction, and in his later years, as a mentor to younger staff. He and the Plaza team did incredible work during the pandemic, transforming an arts center into a provider of social services that were greatly needed at the time. Chris was part of that thinking and planning of using the unique Plaza building with its open central courtyard to house COVID testing and vaccinations, and using the parking lot as a food distribution location. Yet, the arts were always on his mind, and the annual Dia de los Muertos event, La Avenida de Altares, became a drive-through in the parking lot. Leave it to Chris to want to help people connect in the powerful way that the arts can uniquely provide. Our daughter, Olivia, and I would like to thank the San Jose City Council for recognizing Chris today. It means a great deal to us, knowing how much impact Chris had on his beloved city. We urge city leaders to continue supporting those creative thinkers and dreamers who work towards making our city vibrant and special. Thank you so much.
Thank you again for being here to share a bit more of Chris's story and impact here. He'll certainly be missed. Thank you, Councilmember Torres. We are on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things to report out of closed session today. First, council gave authority to file a petition with California Supreme Court seeking review of a Sixth District Court of Appeal decision in the case Sutter's Place Inc. versus City of San Jose. Secondly, we received authority from the council to file an action on behalf of the City of San Jose in conjunction with a multi-district litigation class action entitled in re-shay a loyal antitrust litigation. The defendants in the case that will be filed on our behalf will include Hess Corporation, ExxonMobil Corporation, Permian Resources Group, JustBeak Energy Corporation, Continental Resources, Inc., EOG Resources, Inc., Occidental Petroleum Corporation, and Pioneer Natural Resources Company. That complaint will be filed in the United States District Court, District of New Mexico, and the existing case number is 24-3119. The MDL number is 3119. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items the council would like to pull from consent? Do we have a motion?
Approval of consent. Second.
Great, thank you. Tony, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Okay, let's come back to the council. Didn't see any hands, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Next is land use consent. Do we have a motion, or would anyone like to pull other item? Move for approval. Great. Tony, do we have any comments on land use consent? Again, that's items 10.1A and 10.1B.
We do not.
Okay, let's come back to the council. I'm not seeing any hands, let's vote. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, Tony. Okay, moving on. Run item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have an anniversary to celebrate today. With today's report, I would like to recognize our San Jose Police Department's 175th anniversary in protecting the San Jose community, and give you a little bit of history of how they started and where they are today. Before San Jose became an incorporated city, on March 27th, 1850, there were a total of twelve sworn officers, which included a series of law enforcement officials ranging from first constable to marshal to sheriff to police chief. As San Jose's population grew, so did the need for a larger police As San Jose's population grew, so did the need for a larger police department. Around 1880, city officials began to take an increasing interest in establishing a permanent appearance and recognition of the police force. This was codified by an ordinance in 1886, which called for official uniforms with, quote, "a star on their left breast with the inscription, 'San Jose Police, which has an engraved number shall be worn,' unquote." With nearly two centennials of serving the city, the police department is now 1,742 employees strong with both sworn and civilian staff. The department is deeply committed to delivering exceptional and equitable service, implementing 21st century policing practices, which include building trust with the community, reducing crime, and employing new policies and trainings. Some of the department's recent successes include the implementation of fair and impartial police training, crisis intervention team training, and the use of body-worn cameras. In addition, a strategic plan focused on promoting public safety, workforce diversity, wellness and development, continuous improvement, innovative service delivery, and securing adequate resources has been implemented. Please join me in applauding the dedication and sacrifice of our police department officers and civilian workforce. We all look forward to the police department's continued commitment in serving the community equitably and with compassion and care for centuries to come. And in our audience today is Acting Chief Paul Joseph, Deputy Director Judith Rico, Captain Gina Tabaldi, I see up there. So please stand on behalf of the police department. You can be recognized. Thank you. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you for that report, Jennifer, and happy birthday.
Anniversary.
Anniversary. I was going to say, Paul, you don't look a day over 174. Just kidding. Just kidding. We are moving on to item 3.3, Status of Open Audit Recommendations. And we'll hear from our city auditor, Joe Royce.
So, good afternoon, council. Joe Royce, City Auditor. I'm here with Brittany Harvey for my office to present our report on the status of open audit recommendations as of June 30, 2024. San Jose City Charter prescribes the duties of the City Auditor's office. Our primary responsibility is conducting performance audits that include recommendations to correct deficiencies, strengthen accountability, and improve the efficiency, effectiveness, and equity of city programs. Over the past 10 years, the City Auditor has issued more than 100 audit reports with nearly 700 audit recommendations covering many aspects of the city's operations. We monitor progress toward implementing recommendations from past audits and provide regular reports on the status of those recommendations. And this report provides the most recent status update of open audit recommendations. This report shows the progress on 175 audit recommendations, 23 of which were from audits issued between January 1 and June 30 of 2024. These recent projects include audits of retirement services, internal controls, language accessibility, and non-management performance appraisals. Since our last update, 45 audit recommendations were implemented or closed, and currently, another 108 have been partly implemented by departments. As I noted, over the past 10 years, we've issued nearly 700 recommendations to approve or enhance city services. And of those recommendations, 83% have been implemented or closed. To give a sense of the breadth of the work that's been done to implement recommendations in the past six months, we'll go on to highlight just a few. The Fire Department's Development Services Team finalized a comprehensive website redesign, organizing information by discipline and activity type, providing links to other useful sites and providing dashboards to show average wait times. To reduce travel time for park maintenance crews, PRNS, or Parks Restoration Neighborhood Services, completed maintenance route assessments and redistributed parks from crews for greater efficiency. Planning building code enforcement developed a partner policy for non-routine or high-risk inspection activities and updated performance targets for special programs, such as the Massage and Canvas Inspection Programs. From recent audits, the Human Resources Department and Office of Employee Relations updated city policies to clarify expectations for appraisals for part-time staff as well as the timeliness of appraisals. And the Office of Racial Equity and Social Equity updated or developed guides and tools for departments to include language access considerations in their programs. There are 130 recommendations still pending, 108 of which are partly implemented, with the remaining 22 not yet implemented. We classify recommendations by intended outcome, as shown on the slide in our online dashboard. Of the recommendations still currently pending, the largest number fall into the category of operational efficiency, followed by transparency and accountability and improved service delivery and additional recommendations focused on securing city assets and addressing equity considerations. In 2018, the City Council directed the City Manager to identify and prioritize work on 12 outstanding audit recommendations, while continuing to make progress on all other open audit recommendations. I'll quickly run through the current 12 priority recommendations. Three in the area of potential budgetary savings include improving overtime controls in the police department, adding community service officers to address lower priority police calls, and identifying uses and develop procedures for spending in lieu fees for tree plantings. This last one was implemented this last period. All of the outstanding fees noted during the audit have been spent or programmed, and procedures for spending in lieu fees are now in place. The three recommendation priorities in the area of operational efficiency include eliminating the construction demolition diversion deposit, implementing a database platform to better manage the city's real estate assets, and adopting city policies and procedures by retirement services. Besides the implemented recommendation from the tree removal and replacement audit, progress has been made on each of the others to varying degrees. The three priority recommendations in the area of citywide security and risk mitigation include revising the city's procurement card or PEAT card policy. This was implemented this last period. The new policy and a companion set of administrative guidelines actually address seven different recommendations from multiple audits. Developing citywide administrative guidelines and procedures for managing federal grants and gathering documentation for COVID-related procurements of food distribution contracts. We're closing that one. Not all the information from the food distribution contracts noted in the audit were gathered, however, much has been compiled, which we felt substantially reduced the risk that we identified at the time of the audit. The three priorities in the area of improved service delivery include procuring a software solution, providing sufficient supervisory staff to support wage compliance reviews, clarifying massage program roles and responsibilities. That one's from our audit of code enforcement management controls, and it was also implemented this last period. Code enforcement in the police department developed an MOU to clarify roles and responsibilities around massage businesses permitting and inspections. Lastly, increasing language translations of idle documents, including language translation options on the sjpermits.org website. Like the prior slide, the open recommendations noted on this slide are all in varying degrees or stages of implementation. More information about all open audit recommendations is available in the appendices of the report, as well as online and our interactive dashboards. Those dashboards can be found on our website on the link that's on the slide. With that, I'd like to thank all the city departments for their efforts to implement audit recommendations and for their assistance in compiling the report. I'd also like to thank my staff, in particular Brittany Harvey here next to me, for working with the various departments to document and verify the information in the report. Happy to answer any questions, and I ask that you accept the report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Not on this item.
Okay. Coming back to the council, and we'll start with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you so much for the report. Can we move to approve staff report? Thank you.
Great. Any other comments, questions? You know, I did have one, and I don't know if I'm going too deep into an item here, but I've been really impressed with the progress our county has made, I think with a lot of help from the city, around the gun violence restraining orders. And I noticed there was at least one open rec I saw related to that. And I just wanted to know if you could tell us a little more about what recommendation you have that's outstanding there and what else, in that regard, if that isn't too detailed, you think we could be doing there? But as I understand it, we're kind of leading the state in using this tool. Is that fair to say?
Let me find it really quick, just so I...
I'll see if I have the, I think it was 22-09.
Okay. Yeah, so there's two recommendations outstanding. So one of them relates to updating the Muni code to better align with the California Penal Code. And the City Attorney's Office has drafted some changes, and they're kind of working through the process to bring that forward. The other one was around some updates to the duty manual to reflect the different types of gun violence restraining orders. So currently, at the time of the audit, some of the details of the different types of GVROs weren't detailed in the duty manual. So we want some updates there just for guidance for staff. And both those, that one hasn't really been started yet.
And that one, sorry, what was the last part you said?
That has not been started.
Has not started yet. Okay, I got it. And the first one has to do with the airport specifically?
The, no, the first one relates to updates to the Muni code to align with the state penal code. So it's 22091, and the City Attorney's Office is working on that.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Sounds good. I appreciate that. Do we have other questions or comments from colleagues? Okay, Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Foley and Candela absent.
Thank you, Tony. All right. Thank you all. We are on to item 8.1, which is the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Now, we'll have staff give a brief presentation. I see Eric coming down.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councils. I'll give a brief report on this annual update regarding our submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on the utilization of our funds. So a quick recap, as we are responding to a series of requested changes to provide more data on the outcomes as well as the partners to which we are investing funds, you'll see in the provided report that we, the staff, had very much put together that data to begin pointing us in the direction of what is the results we're getting for the various investments we're making in our partnerships for expanding our outcome orientation, as well as better tracking on the utilization of the funds. So this recap will quickly go through the four priorities that we used for the past prior fiscal year expenditure of funds, which includes, number one, responding to homelessness; number two, increasing and preserving affordable housing through various strategies; three, strengthening and stabilizing our communities; and then four, some of our general work we do around fair housing and legal services. To the first priority, over the past fiscal year, just over 685 individuals received individualized support. And of that, an important note here is 198 of them actually achieved permanent housing placements or intemperary housing placements that are going to be transitioning into permanent. In addition, this was a grant provided to Home First of Santa Clara County, and the total amounts are provided on the screen. So based on the investment that we made in this program, we got to pretty good outcomes on stabilization, responding to homelessness, and providing permanent housing placements. To the second priority, I'm looking at ways we expand and preserve housing opportunities. We can report that 84 individuals, particularly participating in our HOPWA, which is Housing Provided to Individuals with AIDS, they were able to remain housed and receive intensive supportive and healthcare services. So that is a good report, and we're going to be looking at how do we best leverage in our tenant-based rental assistance program, which is one of the gaps in the overall funding that has not been used to date into some of our existing work that we do in partnership with the county and some of our other nonprofit providers. To our third priority on stabilizing and strengthening our neighborhoods, 438 low-income families and seniors received nourishing foods. This program is very much about how do we stabilize our seniors in existing housing developments? So more outputs rather than outcomes, but a good amount of serve for the amount of investment that we made into that program. In addition, just over 343 individuals received training and leadership opportunities. And we're working with Somos Mayfair to further refine what those impacts are as we look for ways to better target our work around stabilizing more families and getting to more of our housing outcomes in addition to some of the leadership and community building that the program does. And lastly, just over 1,000 individuals received referrals for legal assistance. This is some of the work that we do with a law foundation as part of our overall eviction diversion programs to find ways to provide more stability for various residents who are at numerous stages throughout landlord-tenant processes and eviction processes. And this is one of the ways we provide some of that assistance. That program has also leveraged into other work that we do to prevent, as well as divert, and bring more mediation services to our landlord-tenant disputes across the programs. And lastly, this slide just captures very quickly some of the work that we do around fair housing. Overall, we were able to prevent just about 11 evictions, obtain housing options for 26 of those results, as well as preserving and retaining housing for seven other families. For the small amount of funds that we leverage into this, we were able to get to some good impacts for 44 households. We were able to effectively stabilize their housing due to various legal issues that have a broad range of aspects and outcomes within this program. So that is a quick summary of what we've done over the past year for this annual report submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate the summary. Tony, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Moving back to the council, we'll start with Councilmember Batra.
Thank you for that report. Eric, tell me, in terms of the Housing Authority, which distributes money for rental assistance from HUD Section 8, and our rental assistance, which you talked about, how are the two coordinated, if they are coordinated at all? Or how do we maximize the outcome from those two efforts?
Sure. So I'll just distinguish between the two programs. The Housing Authority's Section 8 program under Title 24, Section 908 of the federal statute, that operates as direct permanent rental assistance in either tenant-based version or project-based version. The rental assistance referred to in this program is really geared more towards prevention around homelessness, so it is not a permanent voucher. It is provided as more along the lines of cash assistance on a temporary basis, usually 90 days or less.
Do we keep track of that, having given assistance to those people, do they stay housed for a certain length of time and what that time might be?
Yes. In the past performance of the program, we tracked what is the length of stay post the 90-day period for a receipt of rental assistance. And there are some pretty good outcomes there. I have to get some of the data. We have not distributed the next round of that funding that is coming up here in the next few months. And then, two, the other outcome we track is once they receive that assistance, they have permanent housing, what is the length of stay within that permanent housing? Those are the two primary outcomes that we tracked in the past performance of the program, and I can gather that data from staff in the follow-up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cohen?
Thank you, and thank you, Eric, for the report. I just want to make a quick comment. Thank you for this. And kind of, this is a reminder of how complicated this is. There's a lot of different sources of funding, a lot of different places where they go, a lot of different programs we're involved in. This is a great summary, and it shows the real lives that we're affecting through the work that we're doing. I just wanted to say also about the frustration that I've had over the past few years about this kind of meme out there that we have no idea where the money's going. We keep hearing we have money, that we have no idea what's happening to it. And unfortunately, even people on this council have bought into that. And even members of elected officials from other jurisdictions have accused the city of just receiving money and having no record of what's being done with it. This report is a record of what's being done with resources that we received in order to help our unhoused people in the city. And so I think we can certainly have debates and arguments about the effectiveness and whether or not we're making progress as quickly as we'd like to. But I don't think there should be an argument made that we don't know what's happening with resources, and we shouldn't continue to amplify that idea. So I just wanted to make that comment, and I'll make a motion to approve the consolidated report.
Excellent. Okay, great. Yeah, appreciate that point, Councilmember. It's a good one to make. Tony, we already... a good one to make. Tony, we already, I think we're ready to vote?
Yep.
Already asked about public comment. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Eric. All right, we're on to item 8.3, soft-story seismic retrofit ordinance, and we also have a staff presentation. All right, whenever you all are ready, let's jump in.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Lisa Joyner, Deputy Director of the Building Division within PBCE, and I'm joined by the Director of Housing, Eric Sullivan, and the Director of the Office of Emergency Management, Ray Reardon. So I will give a little bit of background, a quick background on how we got here today. So soft-story retrofits have been a city priority for 10 years now. It was back in 2014 that council first directed staff to explore ways to incentivize soft-story building retrofits. In 2018, the city submitted an application to California's Office of Emergency Services for a hazard mitigation grant, and it wasn't until the end of 2021 that we were awarded the grant. So 2022, we hired a consultant, started the ordinance work, started all the outreach to building owners and residents, and here we are today. So what is a soft-story building? Typically refers to multi-unit residential buildings, so typically apartments and condos that are older. They're constructed with wood frame. They have lower stories with wide-open garages or crawl spaces that lack adequate wall support and seismic resistance, and they have a high risk of damage or collapse during an earthquake. So these are some images of soft-story building failures that have occurred in previous earthquakes, the San Fernando earthquake in 1971, the Baja earthquake in 2010, and the bottom pictures are from the Northridge earthquake in 2024. And you can see these buildings, the open front wall line has no seismic resistance, and these buildings just want to topple over. The guiding principles in creating this program and ordinance are to preserve the health and safety of residents during an earthquake. We want to improve the durability of existing housing stock, preventing the loss of homes, particularly low-cost units after an earthquake, to ensure residents can remain at home after an event. This in turn reduces the number of displaced individuals that require mass care and shelter after an earthquake. These are images of a typical retrofit approach, which is to install a steel frame. You can see from the photos that the new columns align with the existing supports and are not obstructing the existing parking area. If you look closely at the middle picture, you can see the outline of a new foundation placed below the columns, and the beam across the top is connected to the existing structure, and the whole system provides needed lateral support for the building during an earthquake. The proposed ordinance encompasses buildings permitted before 1990 with three or more units. This will be approximately 3,500 buildings. About 80% of the total buildings are, have three to eight units, and about 80% of the buildings are two stories. And using 1990 as the year captures the buildings, both apartments and condos, constructed before the building code change to no longer allow soft-story construction. We have a proposed compliance group in schedule to provide efficient resource allocation for the retrofits, focusing first on the older, larger buildings that will help more residents. So Group 1 is the buildings with five units or more, built before 1978. Group 2 is five units or more before 1990, and Group 3 are all the three and four unit buildings. And the proposed construction completion timeline for the retrofits for each group is four, five, or six years after the effective date of the ordinance.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Reardon, Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Before I get into details of what this slide represents, I'm going to tell a short little personal story. And that is in 1971, I was a 13-year-old growing up in Los Angeles. I was in a nice slumber when my father, his general practice was get up at 5:30, shower, wake us up by 6 o'clock, as he had off to 6:30 Mass. at church. Well, 6 o'clock that morning, myself and my three brothers were in two bunk beds side by side. The bed starts shaking, and we're responding to Dad, "Dad, we're getting up, we're getting up." Dad standing in the doorframe saying, "It ain't me." It was the Silmarc earthquake at that time. It was a significant movement because all the, everything in our house, house fell down, except the bunk beds, we still were there. But everything shook. The bunk bed moved from one side of the room to the other, good three feet, in the motion of the earthquake. And what's most important about that, it was in 1972 that a law was passed called the Alquis Prio of Fault Zone Act, which allowed us to then map the faults throughout the state of California. At that time, there was not a well-dedicated definition of where the fault zones existed. And the result of that is in 1923, UC Berkeley built its football stadium right on top of the Hayward Fault. It is literally splitting apart today because of the seismic activities. In Oakland, there are eight large hospitals built on top of the Hayward Fault, again because they were not aware that the fault zone existed. As time has gone on, there's been a lot of studies about it. The USGS is where our resources and information come from. And what's most important to understand is how these earthquake faults can affect us. And it's the effect of the fault zones that we have to pay attention to, what it does, and that's what the soft-story program is around, is focused on. If you look at the fault zone map that's up there, from the west coast, from the coastline, you have the San Gregorio Fault, which not many people are as well aware of as the San Andreas, which is the red zone there. Then comes a Hayward Fault to the east side of the East Bay, followed to the right of the Calaveras Fault. And the nice thing about all of those fault zones, do you know what's built on them? Freeways. Again, the freeways were installed, the interstate in the 60s and 70s, again, before the mapping was in place. So there was perfect land, flat areas where homes were built, structures were built, et cetera. And what's important about that is we also have different levels of understanding of how the impact of these earthquakes will affect us. Before, there's a 22% possibility of the San Andreas releasing a seven-plus earthquake between now and 2043. That's roughly 20 years from now. And that's a pretty significant number, but even stronger is a Calaveras Fault, a 26% probability, and the Hayward Fault at the highest level at 33%. A San Andreas earthquake for the city of San Jose, we can estimate about $14.9 billion in damages. The Calaveras earthquake fault, $11.5 billion, and the Hayward Fault is $4.7 billion. Again, the magnitude of the San Andreas is significant, followed by the Calaveras, then by the Hayward Fault in terms of its potential impacts. For the San Andreas earthquake fault, we can expect over 4,000 residents displaced. In the Calaveras scenario, there's 8,000 we can expect displaced. And in the Hayward scenario, 2,000. So following along the zones, you can see there's 32 different fault zones just in the Bay Area. The three, the top three, the three that I mentioned, we in the city of San Jose also have the Silver Creek Fault, which runs along the, the, the side of the Hayward Fault, the Sergeant Fault, excuse me, which comes up from Morgan Hill and goes out toward the San Andreas Fault. And then we have the Montevista Fault, which skirts along the San Andreas Fault. So all of those faults have a potential for impacting us here in the area. What's significant about it is the intensity of the shaking. In this pictogram, it demonstrates where there is violent shaking, severe shaking, and not, and very strong shaking. So the very strong is the orange on the east side of the city. The rest of the city is either in the violent shaking or the severe shaking. To the right of the, the legend that's at the bottom is notation of the Mercalli, the Modified Mercalli Intensity Scale. In the city of San Jose, we can expect either an eight, Level 8, or a Level 9. And let me read just what the Level 8 stands for. General fright in the community. Alarm approaches panic. Disturbed persons driving motor cars, so the cars will shake as vehicles are moving. Trees shake strongly. Branches, trunks fall off trees. Ejected sand and mud may come up from the ground in small amounts. Excuse me. Damage is slight to structures that are built to withstand an earthquake. Let me repeat that. Buildings built to withstand earthquakes have slight damage. That does not include soft-story, which is not built for earthquakes. Considerable and ordinary substantial buildings will include partial collapses, tumble-down wooden houses in some cases. Things will fall off shelves, and everything will be displaced within the facility. And we would experience a lot of chimneys, columns on buildings to collapse, which then leads to the buildings to be unoccupied. In the Level 9, there's general panic in the community. Grounds obviously disrupted, and you see the cracks of the fault zone movement. Structures built especially to withstand earthquakes are, are damaged significantly. Throughout, some wood frame homes, homes that were built to withstand earthquakes would be damaged. Masonry buildings, which we have done our retrofit on masonry buildings, have collapsed in large part or wholly shifted from the frames, off the foundations. So the impact would be significant, particularly to soft-story buildings. In 1994, I responded to the Northridge earthquake. No, earthquakes don't follow me, and I don't follow earthquakes, but I was down there in response. The most significant complex that I came across while I was down there was the Northridge Meadows Soft Story Apartment Complex. Significant structure, totally damaged, destroyed, it's all come off its leg. And you saw some of the pictures that Lisa demonstrated, that was, one of those pictures was the Northridge Meadows earthquake. It was not in a liquefaction zone. It was simply the shaking that caused the building to collapse. And that's very important to understand. The shaking itself is a cause for the damage. No other contributions from liquefactions or any other conditions but the actual shaking itself. There have been some reports and, and input given from residents to look at the natural hazard disclosures, which are important documentation for the buying and selling a home. And what that NHD focuses on is what is the land going to do underneath your home in a certain situation? It does not take into account the fact of shaking. All it does is talk about the, the ground underneath the structure and how it might respond, but it doesn't talk about the structure, doesn't give you information about what the impact of that building will be. So it's a very limited piece of information to understand what earthquakes will do to a soft-story program. There was a request to look at information about liquefaction here in the San Jose area. Again, look, most of the map demonstrates that it's a low, very low potential, but you got to pay attention to the high and moderate areas. This is just a contribution to the impact of homes. And you'll see it goes right through the central part of San Jose. Now, an NHD disclosure would focus just on, if you look at the very top, you'll see the Coyote Creek and the Guadalupe River area, what's going out toward Alviso. That's where it has the most significant liquefaction. But again, you'll see in the middle part of the city, there'd be other impacts due to liquefaction. But it's most important to understand that liquefaction is not the cause of a building collapse or a soft story. It's the shaking that takes place. I'm going to turn this back over to Lisa.
The proposed implementation program is to have the effective date of the ordinance be April 1st, 2025, to allow staff time to prepare for the implementation and to provide notification to building owners and residents. And that date will kick off the 18-month screening phase of the program, which will definitively confirm the list of buildings subject to the ordinance and give time for the retrofit financing program to be finalized.
And so with that outline being provided, we then looked at ways in which to best mitigate the impacts in order to complete these retrofits for both tenants and landlords. And what we've proposed here is under, it comes up under our overall preservation strategy, which is required under the housing element under items nine and 13. Our ARO units, which would be heavily impacted by this work, we need to find ways to preserve these units. A couple of weeks ago, as I came before the mayor and council regarding the rent stabilization program, one of those components, two of those components was around unit preservation as well as tenant stabilization. And what is proposed for this refinancing program would further those strategies as ways to get the retrofits done, two, limit the impacts on tenant rents, and then, three, look at ways in which we can also mitigate the impacts on landlords as well as provide potential access to cheap financing in order to not only complete the retrofits, but look at other burdens that our landlord community is having to carry around electrification, around balconies, and where do we provide some additional resources to meet those needs in order to preserve the units as well as to stabilize our families. So what is proposed in this program is to access a component of city funds in order to invest in the preservation of these units. And what we have modeled out, that of the roughly 3,500 buildings in total that could potentially fall under soft story, about 1,800 of those buildings are within our ARL program. And within the ARL program, we estimate, based on our initial analysis, and we'll refine these numbers as we go through the screening period, that the majority of those units will be between three to 20 units, majority of the buildings will be between three to 20 units. So we're really focusing in on our smaller category, our smaller business owner landlords who probably live in one or two of the units, and where do we provide some assistance to mitigate the impact of the costing of these retrofits. A lot of this, component of this analysis has also included a look back over the last five years to the existing landlord-tenant relationships that have had a long period of trend. And we looked at basically a five-year period back to 2018 and identified a world of about 8,000 units where landlord and tenant had a long-term relationship. We define that relationship as roughly five years or more. Based on that analysis, what we found was that roughly 55% of landlords had increased rents. 45% didn't increase rents at all. As a large percentage of those who did not increase their rents realized that further increases to their tenants would result in occupancy that the landlords do not want. And two, they've realized that a lot of those tenants are at max marketable rents for the units that they're in. Of those 55% who did increase rents, that average rent increase was roughly 2.4%, or approximately $44 a year. Based on those historical trends, looking back to pre-COVID, and then capturing a period three-year look post-COVID, we then began to look at ways in which we can devise a financing program that will achieve the three objectives outset at the beginning. Where do we provide opportunities to preserve the units, to mitigate impact on tenant rents, and to ensure that this housing stock can be preserved? And so what is proposed here is a program where we would partner with our CDFI communities in order to leverage the existing theme of rebate funds with city funds and provide a loan program that then the rebate comes in and pays off of up to 50% of that loan program. To reduce the interest rate costs, we would provide these loans at below-market value, which is projected at roughly 4% or roughly 200 basis points to current interest rates, so that is slowly changing over the next coming years. And then be able to provide this program in conjunction with the work that we do under our rent stabilization program, so it is an add-on incentive for these participants. And we would open up that loan program to the landlords who want to complete the retrofits and draw down additional funds underneath the program to complete other unit and building work. The intent of this is designed around those three goals, and we think it also provides sufficient flexibility to adjust to different strains within our rent stabilization program as an as an example for those landlords and tenants who are at that absolute top of market rate of rents and need more rebate than loan. We can make flexibilities around that. We could also adjust to areas where both landlord and tenant are new, uh, and the landlord is bringing a tenant up to market rate rents over years. Where do we make adjustments to the program to adjust for that as well? So this program and its initial concept is designed to be flexible in order to address, one, the wide variety of cost as the ranges for these retrofits are pretty broad, from 30,000 on the low end to just over 140,000 at the high end. Two, the types of the retrofits and the types of buildings and total amount of units in the buildings is also a broad range. And so we want to provide some flexibility within this program to adjust for buildings with smaller units, three to four, as opposed to larger units, 15 to 20. And then three, where do we ensure that this program can adjust to where some of these landlords and tenants are today in their rent payments? And so the last part is about outreach and engagement.
I can quickly go over, um, our engagement process for this work. Um, we've spent, uh, the better portion of last year and this year, uh, reaching out to residents, building owners, um, and many other stakeholders. Uh, we also had the opportunity to train 12 promotorias in our neighborhoods to actually disseminate information, um, into our neighborhoods that can sometimes be hard to reach. Um, and we've summarized the feedback. I mean, basically the concerns have been costs, about the cost to actually, uh, do the retrofit work, uh, how building owners would finance or pay for that, and what the impact that could potentially be, uh, on increased rents. Also, we heard quite a bit about the availability of contractors, uh, to do the work. But in summary, I think everybody agreed first and foremost is keeping people safe in their housing. Um, in terms of next steps, next slide, um, should council adopt, uh, the ordinance today, staff will start the implementation program with extensive outreach and education to our building owners and to our residents, developing a website and online tools for building owners to start, uh, the building permit process. Uh, the 18-month building screening process would start, and then we would return to council, uh, by the end of Q2 next year, uh, with more information about the financing program, uh, and what city funds would be used particularly regarding Measure E. And then we, uh, intend to provide status reports to the Community and Economic Development Committee, um, next fall and then annually thereafter. As I close, uh, Mayor, I just want to thank, um, all of our staff who's worked on this, uh, project. It's taken the village. Uh, I do want to acknowledge, uh, in the audience, Abraham Chaco, who has served as our project manager. We also have David Bonowitz, our structural engineering consultant, who has been extremely helpful, uh, in identifying our, uh, inventory and helping us, uh, craft this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Thank you all. Really appreciate the, uh, high degree of staff collaboration and all the work that's gone into this, uh, and the very robust report and memo. We're going to go to public comment first. Tony?
Okay, I'm going to call your name. When you hear your name, go ahead and come on down. You do not have to appear in the order called, so first person to the microphone, go for it. Um, we have, uh, seats on the front row marked reserved, so if you're waiting for your turn, you can sit in the reserved, um, the reserved seats. So let's start with Jean Hunt, Enrique Navarro Donilon, Rosebel Adolfo, and Cindy Bautista. So if the four of you could come on down.
Anytime. Hello, Mayor, City Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all again. I'm here to support the idea that we do need to do something about safety for people in, in these at-risk properties, but one of the things I noticed is that I've lived here in this, in this area for over 70 years, and in that 70 years, I've had about 50 years' worth of people telling me that we're going to have this very severe earthquake, which apparently Loma Prieta was not severe enough. And as you may recognize, I didn't see any pictures up there from any of the damage done in Loma Prieta. I did see pictures from other areas, so I have a little concern about the necessity of covering all these properties right now and using the short available funds that FEMA may give back to the city to help do this. And so I recognize the idea that we may need to look at the natural hazard disclosure statements a little bit more closely because even though they don't consider the idea of shaking, they do identify properties that are in higher risk areas as far as the fault zones go. And what we know is that yes, there was a lot of damage in Loma Prieta that happened up mostly in Sacramento, or pardon me, San Francisco, but here, what we saw was a lot of chimneys break in the Blossom Valley area. We didn't really see a whole lot of properties in San Jose collapse or anything like that. So I think we need to be a little judicious when it comes to how we dictate to the property owners, these mom and pops, which are most of what the three to eight-unit property owners are. We need to be very judicious about how we apply these different mandates on them, because not only is this one coming, but there's also electrification coming, there's insurance mandates coming at them. All these things are going to actually end up bankrupting them, and so I need the, I would like to have the city council take that into consideration as they make their vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Enrique Navarro with the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. Uh, with the simple ask, do not needlessly bankrupt our small mom and pop housing providers. Passing the staff memo as it is written now will bankrupt our small mom and pop housing providers who provide roughly 70% of San Jose's below-market rate and affordable housing. This will lead to properties being consumed by banks or investors, and from that point on, San Jose loses its affordable housing base and rents elsewhere rise with even less supply remaining. And this mandate is happening in concert with following mandates and issues happening both statewide and regionally. Electric panel updates that are insurance requirement, the balcony mandate coming from the state, electrification mandates on water heaters and furnaces from Bay Area AQMD, the current soft story retrofit being discussed right now, and increased fire insurance premiums with a collective cost northwards of $600,000 for an average property of five units. So this mandate is being adopted without a guarantee of funding in place. We're waiting for the, uh, for the FEMA grant to come through after this. So whatever money we can expect to receive will not be sufficient to cover the cost of retrofits in addition to all these other costs listed. So we need to triage properties in, in an order of dire need and allocate scarce resources accordingly with enough time allowed to do so. And so the solution, uh, is Councilmember Biondo's memo. Uh, every house per California Civil Code must have a natural hazard disclosure form upon transfer sale, which indicates, uh, geologic risks and scientific detail, and this is in an opportune way to alleviate financial burdens off of more property owners while narrowly targeting the rest of the remaining funds to those, uh, who would fall into a risk category. So to qualify for the grant, we only need a policy, not this specific memo as written by staff in place. So therefore, it's not rushed to judgment and impractical and imprudent regulation. Please adopt Councilmember Biondo's memo. We can, we can all win in this outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Um, I'd also like to call John Worthing to come on down and Allison Singalani.
Hello, good afternoon, council members and mayor. My name is Cindy Bautista, and also I'm the community organizer of Paso's Committee, and also a resident of District One. I'm here to, um, speak on behalf of renters, especially those who live in the soft stories building, who are at risk of displacement due to the rising rent. The apartment rent ordinance only covers buildings constructed before 1979. There leaves many tenants in vulnerable housing situations without sufficient protections, especially those who live in the story buildings currently being discussed. We need to ensure that these tenants are protected from the rent increases resulting from the systemic retrofitting. While your safety is crucial, it should not be compromised by the cost of renters losing their homes. What kind of safeguards are being put in place for the renters or for the tenants? Additional Measure E funds should not be allocated, should be allocated for tenant protection and not just for landlords. We need to balance systemic safety with housing security, ensuring that the financial burden is not passed down to renters. We urge the council to consider long-term protections and affordability for all tenants impacted by these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council, city council. I'm Rosebel. I'm the organizer of the Sacred Heart Housing Action Committee. I'm here today to speak on behalf of tenants who face the threat of displacement due to rent increases. As we discussed a critical issue of seismic retrofits for soft story buildings, it's essential to remember that the residents of these buildings are part of the fabric of our neighborhoods. These renters cannot be penalized with skyrocketing rents or forced out of their homes due to set, safety improvements. Measure E funds were established to support vulnerable tenants, not to subsidize landlords. We must ensure that those dollars are used to keep people in their homes, in their communities, and not as a financial tool for property owners. I urge you to adopt the recommendations in the memo and prioritize tenants' rights and stabilities. We can improve safety without jeopardizing the lives of those we aim to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Anil Babar and Scott Soper to come on down.
Good afternoon, Allison Singalani with SV Home. Uh, SV Home appreciates the city's analysis of alternatives and assessment of the racial equity impact of the proposed soft story ordinance, and we're pleased that there's no additional pass-through cost to tenants above the annual 5% rent increase cap. However, we believe that the potential for nainchal impact to tenants and risk for displacement and homelessness has not yet been adequately assessed by the city of San Jose. As the soft story seismic retrofit ordinance memo notes, many residents of soft story housing are living at the lowest income levels. The low rate of rent increases in the ARO program now indicates that landlords are already charging the price the market will bear for their units and that existing tenants cannot afford the allowed 5% annual rent increase. A 2020 study by the U.S. Government Accountability Office finds that for every $100 increase in median rent, homelessness increases by 9%. We ask that council direct staff to conduct further research on the impact that this ordinance would have on tenants and soft story buildings, cross-referenced with data around current rent burden, in order to capture the potential impact of a 5% rent increase on already vulnerable households, and to conduct this analysis annually over the course of the program. Uh, we also ask that council direct staff to identify alternative funding sources for low-interest loan and rebate funds outside of Measure E dollars to preserve what's left of Measure E for affordable housing. These sources would sustain Measure E funds to produce and preserve deed-restricted affordable housing and further offset retrofit costs to reduce potential impact to tenants, or to require deed-restricted affordability for units that receive Measure E funding to support the retrofit. A large portion of Measure E funds, as you all know, have already been diverted to support the construction and operation of emergency interim shelters, leaving only a million dollars annually for the production of affordable housing. Protecting our residents includes ensuring that we all have access to a home we can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
May I ask a few questions of the group before my time starts, or is that part of it?
No, you're just, you have two minutes to speak.
Afraid not. You have two minutes to make your comments. You're welcome to raise questions that you hope that council will ask.
Can I ask, um, what type of earthquakes were Silmar, North Ridge, and Kobe?
This is not the time for them to answer questions. You can ask the questions.
Again, let me, let me just, you want to clarify, Tony, how it works?
Yeah, you can ask questions, but they're not going to answer the questions. You have two minutes.
Okay. Silmar, Kobe, and, um, North Ridge were all thrust earthquakes, something that can't be produced in the Silicon Valley. We have, uh, three, three, um, earthquake faults in the Silicon Valley that can produce a maximum of, of a seven and a half, uh, earthquake, and this is a typical scare tactic that people use to get legislation passed. I don't believe the pictures that were shown were any buildings that were in San Jose. I've been a landlord here for 45 years, experienced a number of earthquakes, especially, uh, Loma Prieta, and nothing happened to any of my buildings. And I just think that this is a big, broad stretch covering 180 square miles, and I think before you pass this, you need more scientific proof of the damage that can possibly be done, rather than somebody falling out of their bunk bed in a thrust earthquake in Silmar. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'm, I'm also going to call down Waskar Castro and Cheryl.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Anil Babar with the California Apartment Association. I want to start by thanking staff for the time they spent in, over the many past years in getting this ordinance here today. Today, we have an ordinance that reflects a shared responsibility to protect housing, a responsibility that requires city, property owners, and residents to each play a role to achieving this resilient housing stock. I want to express my appreciation for the memo authored by Councilmembers Candellis, Davis, and Foley, that recognizes the tight timelines in the staff memo and requested additional time to complete the retrofit, for streamlining the process by having a city develop tenant notification plan in multiple languages, and ensuring that owners who complete the retrofit are eligible for the rebate, regardless of whether they take the loan or not. This is particularly important, as has been mentioned, as rates drop, we want to make sure that owners have the flexibility to find the, the best financing method for them. I want to thank the mayor for the memo he authored, which encapsulates the key components of the available memos at the time, that, and, and for expanding the eligibility of the rebate to more property owners pending the availability of funds. In reviewing Councilmember Dohan's memo, I want, he brings up the very salient point of targeting the limited resources we have to those that are most impacted. I want to close by saying that we have deep concerns over the breadth of the program. I want to make sure that we are targeting, uh, actual soft stories in this process and not taking too, casting too wide on that when we identify properties. As you know, there's no way of identifying a soft story, any records, any access to its database. The best and only way to identify a soft story is through a visual and structural engineering evaluation. And so we want to make sure we have this targeted approach when we address these buildings, and CA looks forward to partnering with the city in helping address that approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Soper. I own a five-unit building at 546 South Fifth Street. It does have a soft story. I bought it 33 years ago. Um, I was a little troubled only finding this out about this four days ago, not from the city, since there was supposed to be owner outreach. Not only did I not get notification, but I, uh, asked my property manager, who manages a number of other soft story buildings, and she had not known about this program either. So everything is deviled in the details. I have something I'd like to, two items. One, with regard to the, uh, impacts on the tenants, I saw on there that this should not be, uh, greater than, say, a paint job or roofing job, which I appreciate. So there's a, there's sort of a built-in limitation of what can be expected, but where I live, parking is a huge issue. And if I tell three tenants that are covered over, they're not going to be able to park there for two months to three months, there's going to be a lot of pushback. They're going to have a lot of problem with that. So there has to be some, typically, if I took a, a parking space from them, they would be due some sort of compensation for that. It's going to happen, so we need to have a specific program to address that. We need to say what that parking space is worth, that it's not going to be subject to some sort of, you know, amorphous rent reduction program or hearings or anything like that. So it has to be pre-built into the program. Additionally, in some cases, parking spaces are going to be lost. Some of this work is going to mean property is going to be gone, and this should also be used as an opportunity to look into future ADU issues when parking space is going to be lost. There has to be a program that sets a standard as to how the loss of parking spaces are going to be addressed, with some compensation, compensation. Who's going to be affected? Is it going to be voluntary? Is there going to be attrition? Is there going to be a mandatory amount someone's going to have to take to move out? That's going to happen with ADUs too. So both of those things need to be, uh, addressed ahead of time.
The other thing that's creeped places and that's addressed is that there's got to be this scheme of, and other demands. That needs to be addressed with the force.
Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Ann Stewart and Bob Morrowian.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Waskar Castro, Director of Housing and Transportation Justice, Working Partnerships USA. Uh, we understand this has been a multi-year process. Uh, I myself, uh, remember getting staff updates, uh, on this issue when I worked at the city, and that was a while ago. Um, so I appreciate the amount of time and work that is done, that has been. So I appreciate the amount of time and work that is done, that has been done into crafting this ordinance. However, there seems to be many outstanding items that warrant further analysis, along with significant concerns around proposed funding strategies for any retrofit financing program. The safety of residents and structural integrity of our soft-story buildings should be a priority. So, too, should our city's ability to continue to protect tenants and stabilize communities and further our affordable housing goals. We should be able to do both, not be concerned about making trade-offs, and figure out how we can be thoughtful and mindful about moving all our priorities to the city. For that reason, I want to urge strong support for the memo authored by council members Torres, Jimenez, and Ortiz, which does take all these concerns into account. We're thinking about what impact could be done towards tenants that are not receiving a full 5% rent increase currently under the apartment rent ordinance, and what this means long-term. We are looking at what other funding sources we can explore, and we should be really intentional about doing that, and we do look forward to seeing staff work on that and how other partners can really come to the table to look to other pots of funds and not look at Measure E as its gift that keeps on giving. We know from two budget cycles that's not the case. And so, I think we're just looking to have everyone be more mindful of what the implications of this ordinance could be for thousands of tenants throughout the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
This is Cheryl. Yeah, I just want to say, you know, when San Francisco and LA passed this stuff back in 2013, 15, things were different, and we didn't have all these mandates we have now. The latest thing is that State Farm is not renewing any more policies on multifamily projects in California if they're up for renewal after August 2024. So that happened to us. So I went out to four brokers to get new insurance for an eight-unit property that was built in the '60s, and not only have the premiums nearly doubled, but they won't insure unless all the electrical breakers and panels are replaced. There's nothing wrong with them. They just said, "Anything that is Federal Pacific, Stablock, Zinsco, Sylvania Zinsco, GTE Sylvania, Preshmatic, Challenger, or fuses has to be upgraded, or you cannot get insurance." So I got a quote on getting that work done by a well-known local electrician, $61,000 we have to pay if we want insurance. Okay? So the costs are going up, the mandates keep coming, the state of California is now talking about an air conditioning mandate. I get it that everybody wants to mitigate damages, protect the environment, make things more safe, but all of this stuff is costing a lot of money. And so, the bottom line, I guess, on this ordinance, I would say, is that getting these grants and rebates somehow is extremely important to mitigate the costs on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Dan Pan, Joyce Lynn, and Jenny Zhao.
Good afternoon, councilpeople. I have owned an apartment in this area for about 45 years, and I found it difficult lately. The points have been made about the cost of it that might hurt us, all of us as owners. The 5% limit, if you had rents like I had, they were very low, and so you start from very low, and it very, and the money goes, comes very slowly. But I'd like to address two things based on something that's just happened within the last week. I had a pool, a swimming pool, and the city encouraged me to get rid of it. I did. It cost about $20,000. And then I went to the city and said, I, you know, I want to build on it. Well, that took a long time for them to check to make sure that they'd taken it out the right way. And so then, I decided that I'd just make a patio. I have just found out that for a patio, that is to put in low-water plants and a little jabezo, gabizo, I can't say it right, anyway, it cost $4,000, and it's pre-made. It can take a wind of up to 100 miles an hour, and so they said, "The permit for that would be $15,000." In other words, San Jose, please make your timing reasonable. This took two years to find out, until I just found out, and your permit costs are so difficult, and it's so hard to get through to them. If you could open those two things up, everything could, would be better. Of course, these mandates for hundreds of thousands of dollars is going to knock out all the, all the little moms and pops, and it's also not going to encourage new, low-cost housing, which is...
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Diane, a board member of BAHN, representing hundreds of mom and pop housing providers in San Jose. People just find out the buildings in pictures, which were used for the related discuss on the document, are not in San Jose. Why? So we have good reason to doubt. How many buildings covered by the discussing really need the retrofit in San Jose? Mom and pop housing providers have behaved so hard during COVID-19. Decline rents, high interest, extremely high cost of everything put a lot of mom and pop housing providers in the edge of bankruptcy. Who are the ones who really provide affordable housing in San Jose? We really appreciate the city as we need to provide financial support for the retrofit program, but cost left is still a huge burden to a lot of mom and pop housing providers. Please use the money to property owners who really need, need the help, and we don't need to waste any money, not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the City Council. I appreciate you worked so hard for almost two years, I think, from beginning for this program, because you do have concerns, a care about the properties and the people who live there in the city of San Jose. And I was part of it at the very beginning. I was invited to the several meetings, and so I think it's very good intention. Thank you. However, we have to analyze, analyze it rationally. So my, I have few questions, two questions. One is, we need to really be careful about the scope of work. Everybody knows that when previous earthquake comes, right? So, see, San Jose is relatively less impacted compared to San Francisco, Berkeley there. Then, San Francisco ordinance applies to only three-story and more, soft story with the five units more. So that applies to how many units they have a statistics and the reason to do it. And we have less impact, but we, this one applies to three and four more units and the two-story. Of course, soft story is issue. Even my single family, I have a crepe wall, right? I need to do it. But this is mandate. That's different. So I want you to rethink scope work, rethink, because there's a cost to it. I just tell you one thing. Let's say, let's say you need to hire a structural engineer to assess if your building is okay. They cannot do it? Then guess what? They fail. Then they don't have money? Guess what? They fail. Then guess what? They finally, they walk away. They say, "I'm not going to rent it out. I'm not qualified. I, my house doesn't comply with the code." Then, then who is, I mean, suffers this? Then you have less you...
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Jeremy Berus, Stephanie Ligsay, and David Eisbach.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Jenny Zhao, a San Jose resident and housing provider. The risk of earthquake is real, and our renter's safety is important. But passing the region's most strict and broad impractical mandate is not the right approach. It unnecessary, put mom and pops at risk of bankruptcy, and makes our renter the collateral damage. We urge the city to focus on the most vulnerable properties in a fault, hillside, or liquefaction zone with a very limited funding. Please support Councilmember Bian Don's memo. We appreciate the city to partnering with us by providing low-cost financing options and rebates, but please be mindful, to many senior owners who live on a fixed income, their ability to repay a loan is very limited or near zero. So this is still a huge burden to them. With today's skyrocketing labor cost, a very broad, overly broad mandate will only make the limited funding meaningless. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeremy Berus, Director of Policy and Organizing with Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment, and I urge the council to adopt the memo authored by Ortiz, Torres, and Jimenez. At Amigos de Guadalupe, we see dozens of walking families every day who are barely hanging on with the high cost of rent. Alongside with our partners today, we urge the council to recognize the various components of this ordinance and what the adverse impacts on renters in San Jose, as well as our city's ability to fund affordable housing. We understand the need to ensure that soft-story buildings have the structural integrity needed to endure the, an earthquake when the big one occurs, but how we craft policy to address this issue should not compromise our ability to advance key priorities such as community stabilization and affordability, which are paramount to solving our housing crisis. Let's ensure community safety and preserve valuable affordable housing funds for our most vulnerable residents in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and Mayor Mahan. My name is Stephanie Ligsay. This staff memo is written will likely put our small, independent housing providers out of business. They provide the bulk of our affordable housing, and let's be real, below-market-rate housing in this city. If we lose these housing providers due to the strict ordinance, we will lose the bulk of our affordable housing. This, in conjunction with the other state and regional mandates, could prove catastrophic to our small mom and pop housing providers. The city needs to take advantage of whatever grant funding has been and will be received and target it to where it is most needed. Triageing properties in order of dire need and allocating scarce resources accordingly is the logical path. Councilmember Duan's memo will be a formidable solution. Because of the natural hazard disclosure that comes with every home transfers, homeownership transfer, we are given a proven scientific indication of the geological risks of each home and where it resides. Regarding the Loma Prieta earthquake and its devastation, 88% of the damage was in a five-square-block radius in San Francisco, and that was due to landfill. The rest of it was 12% in the entire Bay Area, including San Jose. That leaves, to qualify for the proposed grant, the city simply needs a policy in place, not the current staff recommendation. There is no need to rush to strict, impractical mandates. I ask you to adopt Councilmember Bian Duan's memo. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker. And I've also called all of the speaker cards. One person, Ann, did not come up, so I'm just double-checking to make sure Ann's still here. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. It seems to me we've got, we have really a, a problem of vision. If you had, for example, we've all got limited funds. That's the whole program, and Proposition 5 isn't going to save us on that. Now, what has happened here is, it seems to me that we have ignored the priority of properties, properties that needed, that are absolutely in a position of jeopardy. And where do we find that? There's no, it's, it's illogical to me to pay $5,000 to have an engineer come in and dictate that a property is going to fail or not fail. When this, when the state, in its California Civil Code, Code 1103, simply says, and this is a document that when you sell a home, that disclosure is there, and that disclosure tells you where the liquefaction is, where the flood potential is, where you've got landslide problems, or if it's close enough to the fault. So what I'm saying is that we should take that, and that's $125 or so, that should be used as a basis of locating areas, and within that area, that's where the emphasis should go. You've got limited money, no matter what FEMA's promised you, or what grants are promised. It's not enough to cover every...
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I don't see anybody else coming down, so we're back to council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tony. Okay, coming back to the council, and I see we have a number of hands up, just as we have had a lot of very thoughtful public comment. Thank you all for taking the time to be here and voice questions, concerns, and recommendations to the council. We also had a number of memos. I want to just offer a few opening remarks and questions, and then we'll open it up to my colleagues. You know, I think, as I understand it, and obviously staff should correct me if I get any of this wrong, but part of the time sensitivity here, in addition to the fact that, you know, we certainly don't know when the next earthquake's going to happen, is that we do have some obligations under a $6.2 million grant we received from FEMA and have applied for the next $25 million FEMA grant. So we do, unlike many of the unfunded mandates that I will reference, because I know our property owners are under quite a few burdens these days, we are making a really serious effort here at the city to compile funding to help mitigate the impacts of these investments. I want to just remind my colleagues that what we'd be doing today is passing an ordinance to go into effect in the future that would mandate the retrofits. We still need to have a conversation in the next budget cycle about how we would help fund this work. We've talked about low-cost loans, there's the FEMA grants I mentioned, but I just want to be clear, that's an open issue, an important one, that we need to sort out during the budget process, and I know staff has let us know that they'd be able to come to us with some options and trade-offs. So I think what they're asking us to do today is move forward with an ordinance, we'll see how the conversation plays out here, and give them some more time to dig into different funding sources and financing options. What I attempted to do yesterday was I drafted an individual memo that was trying to piece together what I saw as likely areas of consensus amongst a couple of the group memos. So I'll just highlight those quickly. I appreciate the Foley-Davis-Candelaus memo, and as was mentioned by some of the speakers, I think giving ourselves a little more time here is responsible, because as we heard in the questions, there are a lot of concerns and still some unknowns there, and our property owners are under a lot of mandates and burdens, many of which are unfunded. So I've included that in the memo I wrote. Also appreciate the memo from Ortiz, Torres, and Jimenez, and, you know, appreciate the intent of trying to ensure that residents do not receive undue rent increases that are overly burdensome, and while we might preserve the unit, we might still see displacement of individuals. I think we're trying to get at those goals through our rental registry and the commitment we've had from staff to better collect data under all the existing policies that we, anti-displacement policies that this council has passed. On the second recommendation, I do have a concern and did not include it simply, and again, it's, you know, ultimately up to the council through its deliberation here, I worry that opens us up to modifying a separate city ordinance that we're not here to vote on today. We're... that we're not here to vote on today regarding the rent cap. So I've left that out, at least of my memo. And what I would recommend, though I appreciate, you know, I get the intention, which I think is a fair one. And then on the third, I've just kind of modified it to try to be clear. I think the best path, and again, we can ask questions of staff on that third rec, is to ask staff to monitor the impacts of tenants through the existing workload that we've approved, that would be through our rent stabilization strategic plan. So that's just a little bit of what's in my memo. Now, to be fair, that was written before Councilman Duan wrote his. So look forward to a little more discussion of the suggestion of an exemption and the potential logic of that. A couple of clarifying questions, and these are for staff. In developing the scope of which buildings this ordinance should apply to, I'd like to hear a little more about the methods we used and some of the logic behind the scope. We heard that raised by a number of speakers.
Thank you for the question. So the consultant that we hired did a statistic sampling of the city based on, oh gosh, I don't have the exact numbers. A thousand, a thousand properties. A statistical sampling of those thousand, how many are soft-story? And then extrapolated that to the number of multifamily buildings in the city to come up with a 3,500 estimate of buildings at the upper bound.
Hey, Mayor, if I could just add to that. So our ordinance is really designed around the age of buildings built, when they were built, and size of the buildings. So as we've previously shared, in San Jose's multifamily building housing stock, most of the apartment buildings were built prior to 1978. And we know those buildings are more than likely soft-story. During the eighties is when most of our condo buildings were built. And those buildings are more than likely soft-story as well, because it was in nineteen, actually, 1989, the state ordinance went to effect in 1990, where the state no longer allowed buildings to be built with the soft-story. So soft-stories were no longer allowed, right? So state law, state building code changed. So we know that after 1990, there should not be any buildings built that are soft-story. So our logic is targeting those buildings built before 1990. And as Lisa shared, our consultant and his work and his inventory, we think it's around 3,500 buildings. And again, our compliance schedule is based on age and size. So we want to target the older buildings that are larger first.
Okay. So far, so good. That makes sense. So age, size. In terms of size, is there, are we making a distinction between the number of stories in a building? And is that something you considered?
That's a great question, and we had that from many of our stakeholders. Our building stock here in San Jose for the soft-story inventory, most of our buildings are just two-story. In fact, it's eighty percent of the soft-story inventory are only two stories. Unlike San Francisco and other cities that are higher-density cities, San Francisco particularly, those buildings are, have, are higher.
Okay, so most of our buildings are at that lower level. Then do we still believe there's as much of a risk associated with those buildings that are not three, four, or five? Can you just talk a little bit about the risks? And again, why we need to do this and apply this to so many properties?
I'm going to turn to Lisa, or maybe our consultant, to enter in more details. I mean, bottom line, we want to capture all buildings that are potentially soft-story, regardless of their height. It's just that for San Jose's building inventory, we know that most of those are two-story. I would expect that a three-story building that's soft-story, you can go to the mic, still could likely collapse during an earthquake event. Thank you, David.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, councilwoman Mayor. My name is David Bonowitz. I'm the city's consultant on this program. It's a good question. All other things being equal, a taller building is probably a bigger risk. As Rosen pointed out, the inventory in San Jose is largely two-story. That does not mean that these are good buildings necessarily. In fact, what was interesting about Lisa's presentation and the four pictures of the collapsed buildings, those pictures were chosen because they're all two-story buildings. So these buildings do collapse if they're bad. So some buildings are worse than others. Some two-story buildings, the program is set up to find that if you have an engineer to say that it works, it works, and you're done. So the whole premise of this program and all the other programs in the Bay Area and around California allows the owner to choose their own engineer to make an assessment and show that it meets the basic criteria, two-story or not.
Okay. So, thank you. So, and don't go too far away. I imagine we'll have more questions for you. So the risk of injury or loss of life, still with the two-story, is what I'm hearing. And then can we speak to the nature of the earth? I don't know if this is for Ray, or Kip, or you, or whomever, but the nature of the kinds of earthquakes we have? I heard some mention of, or at least some questions about, again, the risks here. I just want to make sure we are on the same page about what staff believes to be true, I think would be helpful for the public record and for all of us.
Well, I think Ray went, got to this point, that it's the shaking that causes the damage and can cause collapse, independent and even without any kind of ground failure. So I've heard mention today of what is typically, we call in the engineering community, ground failure modes. So liquefaction, landslide, fault rupture. Those are very localized things. They do happen, but that's not ground shaking. These buildings and bad buildings can collapse from ground shaking alone. San Jose has a major risk of ground shaking. It's in the highest risk category for the entire state in terms of its seismicity. I mean, you have a professional sports team called the San Jose Earthquakes. So this is not foreign to San Jose. Most of the city, even if you wanted to focus on liquefaction areas, most of the city is liquefiable soil. So you'd be back in the same boat if you went that way, too, probably. Again, it's the shaking that matters. And the natural hazard disclosure reports, as Ray pointed out, do not address the building. They don't go above the ground. So they're looking at what's happening for ground failure, not for the impacts on the structure. And in fact, that is why, in addition to disclosure reports, other interested parties like banks, insurers, et cetera, will routinely ask for more information than is in the natural hazard disclosure report, because they want someone to be looking at the building, too.
Great. Okay, well, then I think you may have just answered my next question, which was whether or not a simple natural hazards real estate disclosure or liquefaction zone map would help us better target this. And I think you've answered it, but I don't know if Ray or anybody else would like to shed any more light on that. Again, I just, I want us as a council to be well-educated. I'm certainly learning. There's a lot of complexity. And by the way, a lot of competing interests here that are all valid, right? Property owners, renters, and costs here, which are so relentlessly going up in our region. So, yeah, Ray, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's important that people do recognize, San Jose is special. We didn't have the damages we had in 1989 like others did. But that's because the impact, the impulse of the earthquake, it doesn't matter, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but it doesn't matter if it's a thrust fault or a slip fault. There's shaking. And it's that shaking intensity that is the concern. And the NHD does not talk about shaking. All it does is talk about the integrity of the soil below. Because what the property, the value of the property is the land that it's on, as well as the building, but it doesn't talk or address what the impact is inside the building or to the building structure itself.
Are we capable of getting earthquakes at a level that anywhere in the city could take down a two-story, a two-story soft-story?
Very much so.
Seven, eight, nine?
USGS really pointed that out significantly in their reports, and that's the basis of a lot of our information that we've gathered.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's helpful context, I think. Kip, did you want to jump in as well?
Just a couple of things related to those questions, Mr. Mayor. Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. Between Lee Wilcox and myself, the two people who have the most time in grade on the Emergency Operations Center Director role, and I think I want to, in terms of the direct answer to the question, I think as we've done our evaluation, I really appreciate the commentary and the perspective of the folks in the room and the people who own houses and who are providing that housing. And it is very important that we craft an ordinance that takes into account the realities of the market. Part of what we've done, as we've decided to scope on this, is look very carefully at the hazards facing the city of San Jose. I've spent seven years studying and working on this, and now Type One Certified EOC Director. It's the highest level of certification in the state of California for an EOC Director role. I've had over 300 days as an EOC Director, and I've thought about this a lot. When our last study session happened, I remember Councilmember Foley asked me the question, are we prepared for the next earthquake? And my answer was yes. And my answer, I believe, should have been yes, asterisk, if we do one thing in terms of mitigation, which is the soft-story work. So we've tried to craft this in a way that is maximizing our preparedness for the earthquake, but takes into account all of those issues. Very concretely to your question, the, in our determination, it is not simply the liquefaction or the fault line or the hillside that are the important issues. It is the shaking. So even though, to the point, much of San Jose is in the liquefaction area, and most of the hillsides are either on a fault or on a hillside, the reality is that those areas that are outside of that are also highly at risk. And FEMA has identified the city of San Jose as having the highest risk of earthquake damage of any city in North America and the highest amount of damage to us of any city in North America. So as we've looked at everything that we might do, or could do, or should do to mitigate those hazards, the very top of that list, and the most important thing, in my professional opinion, that we can do, is this. And we've tried to craft the ordinance in a way that is most responsive to our reality. So I'm going on a little broader than your question. If, I'll pause if you'd like me to stop at this point, but there are a couple of other points I'd like to make.
No, that's helpful context. Go ahead. If you feel we've missed, there's anything that hasn't been brought up yet, feel free.
Just a couple of things, because I think it speaks to some of the very understandable comments that were made. One of the hardest things to prepare for is what's called a low-frequency, high-impact event. We, as humans, and our brains, are quite used to things that happen on a daily basis, a weekly basis, seasonal basis, or yearly basis. We're not really able to, a lot of times, deal with these low-frequency, high-impact events. The COVID pandemic is an example. If in 2019 we'd had the conversation, if you hadn't been alive in 1918, you'd be like, hey, there is no risk of a pandemic event. Well, it's a very low frequency, but a very high-impact event. So some measure of preparation for those is super-important. And this is in that category. And I understand, we haven't had this. But every analysis that I've seen on those three major faults, Calaveras, Hayward, and San Andreas, suggests two things. One, we will have a magnitude event that will cause enough shaking that will take down these buildings and kill people, injure people, and make many people homeless. And two, that is, we are technically overdue for that. Now, it may happen tomorrow. It may not happen in my lifetime. But it is a very high-impact event, and it will happen. Second thing is this notion of what we do when we respond. The moment that earthquake hits, everybody in the city is going to be responding. We'll close down community centers. We'll close down high schools. We will mass care and shelter everybody, and we will do a really good job with that. Because like me, everybody in our city over the last seven years has worked to train and prepare themselves for that moment. But what we do left of boom, before that, is the most important thing that we can think about in terms of prevention. And this is our challenge today. The last thing I'll say is the opportunity cost. We know about the actual costs, and they're very important to think about. I'm also concerned that we think about the opportunity costs. When this event happens, and we have thousands of people to care and shelter for, all of the things we will not be able to do as a city are going to be extremely significant and take away from our effort and our ability to do that response. So part of why we are recommending this on the city side is that we, if we can have people who can stay in their homes, property owners who can continue to rent out those homes and make a living after the earthquake happens, not only are they going to be better off, but we're going to be able to respond to the very most urgent issues here and not have to close down as many community centers, schools, or other pieces. So again, I apologize for going a little bit long on this, but I want you to understand that this is not a rush to judgment, and we've spent over a decade debating and thinking about this. And this is our best effort, and we are open to modification and policy changes to make it a better effort. That's your role. But recommending what is a fair and balanced approach to both the risks that we face, the need for, legitimate need for the property owners to make money, and the need for the renters to be affordable and to stay in those locations. So in our estimation, these are the buildings that are most at risk and where we have the most to gain and the most return on investment. So thank you for that extra time, and I apologize. This is something I'm very devoted to and really proud that we're at this day, finally.
Thank you, Kip. And I appreciate how much work you've put into not just this, but emergency preparedness and operations in general in our city. So I do think that was helpful. I'll make a final point. I did have two other topics I want to touch on and do it very quickly, because I want to get my colleagues' perspectives in here, and I apologize for taking so long. You know, obviously, the reason we are having this conversation is because first and foremost, we have a responsibility for keeping our residents safe. So that is the single most important thing we're charged with doing. I do want to acknowledge to the property owners who came and spoke today that, you know, I'm cognizant that you all have faced a number of unfunded mandates in recent years, including the unfunded state mandate on balcony inspections and replacements, the regional air quality, district mandates around electrification. And then, of course, the big challenges many of us are facing in insurance markets. And so I recognize the cost pressures that are there, which is why I want to just touch on these two topics. I'm going to ask them together, so I can get on to colleagues here. One is around funding. We're talking about passing an ordinance, a mandate today, that, at least as of today, is mostly unfunded. We're talking about coming back and doing some additional work on that. I'd like to get a little more clarity around the prospects of different types of funding or financing that may be available and what the council should expect next year as part of the budget process. And then, relatedly, labor supply. We're setting a mandate and deadlines, and how confident are we that the workforce is there to deliver on this mandate? And then with that, I'm going to move on to colleagues.
I think it's important, thank you for the question. It's a very good question, and I do acknowledge that, obviously, we're here for our responsibility and safety and making sure the landowners are whole in the whole process, the renters are able to stay in place. That's why we sought the FEMA funding, and it does come in phases. So we've completed Phase One, which was the study, the establishment of the ordinance. And now we have a source of funds. As soon as FEMA approves the acceptance of all our Phase One documents, then they will approve Phase Two, and that gives us some starting money to make sure we address the implementation. And that money is dedicated strictly to construction and implementing the retrofits in the process. We've also applied for the 25 million with FEMA. That's still being debated, discussed. But it relies on this ordinance being a mandated ordinance, as well as the remaining in Phase Two that we have, the current FEMA funds. Thirdly, we just notified today that there is funding through BRIC focused specifically on seismic events. So we have an opportunity for additional funding to apply for in the process. And BRIC stands for Building Resilience in Construction. And that's B-R-I-C. So it's a specialized set of funding set aside by FEMA for putting together more mitigation projects like that. And that's around 45 million. So we have an opportunity to continue applying for these alternate sources. With that, then, we also have the funding that Eric's been working so tightly on. And I'll turn it over to Eric.
Just one thing. Two of the preconditions of the BRIC grant are having a completed local hazard mitigation plan that identifies that specific hazard, and having gone through what's called a BSEX, which is a multi-month analysis of all of the building staff and their ability to do the building code work right. We've done both of those. And so we have done all of the major prerequisites for the BRIC program and are, will be well and competitive in terms of any application process that we go forward under that program.
And the only other thing I want to add, Mayor, is in addition to the state funding, as well as the federal FEMA funding, we would look at an above-all approach around local funding sources, including recurring and non-recurring sources, to build into the financing program of this to address the, you know, both sides of the challenge around mitigating impacts to landlords, as well as ensuring that our tenants are able to hold down what would be, you know, potential rent increases around there moving forward. So we would take all those components into the overall design as we come back to Mayor and Council to propose what is the financing plan for this with further detail.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all again, and I appreciate my colleagues' patience. I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you. Well, I know that a lot of work has already been done on this. I want to say thank you to all of the people who have come today, as well as those who have, over time, dedicated their time and their energy towards this subject. I know that many have been meeting with many of us here at the council on this topic. And it's, you know, particularly near and dear to my heart, because I have the majority of those buildings in my district. So I know how detrimental it can be. So I know how detrimental it can be. I also want to put out there that, you know, I, for one, do not want to put any small businesses out of business. And we understand that there are a lot of mandates. I myself also have a unit and understand that with all of the mandates, it's pretty tough. And it's pretty tough trying to keep rents down as well as costs down and try to fulfill all of those things. I really want to thank my colleagues for their very thoughtful memos. I especially want to thank the memos of council members Foley, Davis and Candellis to, you know, extend the timeframe a little bit so that we can have more time. And bringing it back to CED in nine months, I think that makes a lot of sense. I always am a proponent of adaptive management approach. I understand that this is by no means perfect and I think that we have to also figure out how to learn a little bit more. I'd ask the staff to consider whether the 18-month screening is enough. Maybe we need 24 months, but I think that when it comes to CED, it might be a way to be able to evaluate, okay, is it working? Is it not working? Do we need to rethink the timeframe? I also know that the Ortiz, Torres and Jimenez memo is also very thoughtful. I think we need to look at the limited funds that we do have and that is going to be a separate discussion in terms of considering during our budget time. And I know that if we don't have the funds, then it's, you know, a different picture. So I think that that is something that I would see. I also wanted to ask a question regarding whether or not there is a, you know, way to explore other exemptions. I know that if you get a structural engineer to say, oh no, you're okay, that property will be exempt. But are there potential other ways to, you know, assess a property and say, hey, you know, it's exempt? And I'm just wondering, you know, if you had gone through other avenues to look at how you would potentially find an exemption.
Thank you. Honestly, the easiest way for these properties to get off the list or not ever be on the list in the first place is to have that engineer fill out the screening form evaluation and say, this building is fine. Here's my stamp, here's my signature, and then they're out.
Is that the only way? I mean, I don't know. I don't know, I've never built a building, but I was just wondering, is there a potential to open that door so that if someone were to say, hey, you know, not a structural engineer, maybe a civil engineer or something?
Sure. So the design professional required to make that judgment doesn't have to be a structural engineer, can also be a civil engineer, can even be an architect. But they have to, like every licensed professional, they have to practice within their area of expertise. So, you know, you can't find someone who is a licensed architect but has never done work of this type, right? So you can find that. But to Lisa's point, and I want to tie this in with the first question the mayor asked as well about how we sliced up these buildings. You could say that some of these buildings are, as a group, less risky than others. I mentioned that in my first response. Two-story buildings, all other things being equal, probably less risky than four-story buildings. That's true. 1920s cripple wall buildings, probably more risky than 1960s two-story buildings with a unit on the first floor and only partially open. That's exactly the kind of thing that the evaluation by an engineer would identify. And we have set the criteria low enough that all, it's not, we're not asking buildings to be as good as they would be by, if they were designed and built new today. We are setting the low bar, which is appropriate for retrofit in mandatory programs that deal with thousands of buildings at a time. It's a low criterion. So for a building that's even halfway good, it should be able to pass that. But we know there are a lot of buildings that are not even halfway good. I mean, we can talk about the analogies to other, to medical issues or other kind of products, but there are ways to be not exempt, but you can be exempt by screening, you can be exempt by evaluation, you could have done a prior retrofit and have your engineer show that that was essentially the same. And there's the broad scoping question. If you look at the first table in the memo and the first table in my report, you could say, you could write a program that says, we're only going to do five store, five unit and larger buildings. We're only going to do three-story and taller buildings. You'd be ruling out most of the buildings in San Jose by doing that. So that's not my recommendation, it's not staff's recommendation, but there are ways to cut the program and just, but you'd be making an arbitrary judgment as a political matter to say, we deem these buildings to be not important enough to retrofit. I mean, you can say that and that's a way of exempting big groups of buildings at once and that's why that first table in the report shows four broad options like that. Again, not my recommendation and not staff's recommendation at this time, but that's another way to scope the program.
Well, thank you for that answer. At this time, I'd like to move the mayor's memo, which includes to adopt the memo authored by council members Foley, Davis and Candellis. And I really like that it's going to come back to CED. I also adopt the memo authored by council member Ortiz, Torres, Jimenez, accept one AI and create a financing program that allows all soft story units to access favorable loan terms. And I know that we're going to talk about it in the next budget cycle.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilor Foley.
Thank you for the presentation and, Kip, I want to thank you for your passion about this issue. Mayor, you kind of teed up the conversation really well and asked a lot of the questions that were on my list. But first, I want to share a personal story with you. And while I know there are people in the room who did not experience a loss of home or even property damage in 1989, I lost my house in 1989. Yes, it was in the mountains. Yes, it was in the Santa Cruz mountains, but it was a soft story building. It was, it lifted off the foundation, cantilevered over the side and collapsed. I thought it was financial ruin for me. I thought I lost my husband because he was in the property at the time. Luckily, he was able to crawl out as the house separated around him. I raised this story and I've told it in CED a couple of times because it's important that we understand the human experience of a loss of your house, your financial wealth or your, everything is in your house and potentially a loss of life, more importantly, a loss of life. I want no one else to experience that. So I have to support the ordinance and proposals that's coming before us. I want to thank staff for their presentation and it's truly critical that we preserve these older buildings and that we require this retrofitting to go forward. We've been working on this for 10 years. That's longer than I've been around, but at CED, it's been coming to us every year for the last three or four years. And finally, it's at a point where I'm happy to bring it forward because I do like the proposal of the rebate and the impact on, the shared impact on both helping build the structure, make it safer for the tenants, but also some financial assistance for the landlord. We've heard concerns about the availability of the professionals to do the screening. Mayor raised that. We've heard concerns about the amount of contractors available to do the work. So that's why our memo extends the timeframe on the construction for a year on each category. Initially, we wanted, Vice Mayor, to your point, 24 months in the first screening portion, but compromised with a nine-month comeback to CED and we can analyze it at that time and see how it's going forward. I think it's human nature, they're going to wait until the 18 months and then they'll go out and get their screening. So that gives them a little bit more time and I like the idea that it will come back to CED. Also, the inclusion of a multilingual document created by the city will really help the landlords or the property owners out with simply filling the blanks for properties and dates and that sort of thing. I look forward to seeing the finance piece come back. I know we're not discussing that right now and we're not discussing Measure E. All of those things have to be discussed in context of the budget anyway and the reallocation of Measure E is something that has to come back in the budget process next year. So we're a little bit away from that. I also appreciate the memo from council member Ortiz and Torres and Jimenez. But I am concerned about the provisions around the city manager making changes to an ordinance that is under the control of city council. And already, we have a provision that limits rent increases to 5%. That, if that's a discussion to have, that needs to come back after full vetting to the council and not as a portion of this item. So we need to be able to collect the real data too. There may be theories that rents will increase and that will impact tenants, but until we have the data, we have nothing really to action on. So I really want to see that data before we can move forward. So I accept the two motions, or the motion, and I actually seconded it. And I've heard the comments from, about the natural hazard disclosure statement and I'm very familiar with that document. Being a former Realtor practitioner, seen a lot of the natural hazard disclosure documents, but as, how is, as has been pointed out, it doesn't talk about the structural integrity of the dwelling. It talks about the land underneath and the land surrounding it, but it doesn't talk about the dwelling itself. Is it a soft story building? Is it, what kind of foundation does it even have? That's something that the appraiser talks about. That's something that the lender looks at and the property owner will look at too, but the disclosure statement doesn't. Nor is it a guarantee that nothing is going to happen if you have a natural hazard disclosure statement. It's simply a disclosure, it's a required disclosure that is given at point of sale, when a property is being sold. So could you easily obtain that now? Sure. Is it cheaper? Sure. Is it going to give you a peace of mind? Not necessarily. Retrofitting will give you the peace of mind that you need. So that's the end of my little speech. But I do support the ordinance and I'm going to support it going forward because even loss of one building, one life is one life too many as a result of something that we could have prevented by someone doing some structural changes to their dwelling. I know there are issues with it. And the one issue that I'm most concerned with, most of the questions were answered, but it has to do with the identification of the properties itself. I've heard that we used a statistical analysis, but that may be overreaching. So are we going to, when we, how are we going to notify property owners and who are we going to notify that they fall into this category?
Thank you. So we will be sending out notifications to the property owners that they may be subject to this ordinance with all the screening information, information for the website where they can get more information, staff contacts to get just information about the program overall. For the, excuse me, as far as the condo associations, I'm not sure exactly, are we sending to HOA's contacts for the overall building? That's all information we need to finalize in the implementation phase as we get all those notifications sent out.
So I'm concerned about the notification that we're going to be, that we're overreaching in our notification and that, and I would encourage you to be really thoughtful in your notification, that it, Lisa, you mentioned you may be subject to it, but I just want the language to be, I guess, more, I guess, I'm very concerned that they're going to get this letter and all of a sudden panic. And then it's going to cause them to overreact and then we at the council office are going to get a lot of phone calls. We're going to say, well, you may or you may not be, you need to do this, you need to do that. And we want to be helpful in this process, but we don't want to panic the property owners either, particularly if they happen to get this letter and it's clear by a visual look, this isn't a soft story. They just happen to be in a pre-1990 dwelling that's two stories. And so can we limit the letter? I know, really, the only accurate way of knowing if it's a soft story, you drive by and you see that it's a soft story. You don't know if it's been retrofitted, but you can tell by looking at it. We don't have the resources to drive by and look by that, at that many houses. I mean, that many properties, truly. Is there a way we can limit the numbers a little bit more? Is there, I'm concerned about the statistical because it's going to be overreaching.
So council member Foley, we share your concern. We totally agree with you. And moving forward, we will be very thoughtful about that notification and what that list might look like and even the messaging. And we appreciate you and the council offices, like, helping us with education to the building owners as well. We certainly share your concern. So we will, we will definitely take that in and will work on messaging and noticing that's appropriate.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you. I can see that my time is now over because my red light is blinking. So I will just leave it at that and thank you for the thoughtful approach. I do look forward to the future discussion around the finance piece because the devil will be in the details of those and how we can, how that part can be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, council member, councilor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who worked on this project for their hard work. I know this memo has been a long time coming and I recognize the many concerns that have been raised along the way by both tenants and property owners, especially around pass-through costs for tenants and the potential for displacement. Your efforts to address these complex issues are appreciated. With that being said, I do have a few questions. As we discuss the potential use of Measure E funds for this financing program, I want to make sure we're being thoughtful and transparent about the implications. What additional affordability components, if any, will be attached to anyone utilizing these Measure E dollars?
Thank you, Councilman Ortiz. So as we think about the design of the program around the affordability restrictions, they will have to, obviously, number one, comport to the existing restrictions regarding the rent stabilization and the ARO programs. And then, number two, as we look at the financing design, depending on source of funds and how do we match both the state and federal funds, we'll have to create the proper balancing act there around what is the pass-through amount and looking to keep to the intent of the proposal to balance those costs evenly on both landlords and tenants. As far as specificity of those restrictions, I can't speak to that today until we get more numbers and refine the financing program.
Thank you. Preservation funding intended for acquiring and rehabilitating existing affordable housing is intended to be used for either deals modeled after land trusts or CDC styled projects or for affordable housing developers to maintain existing units at a certain income. How does this proposal deviate from these sorts of uses more commonly known as preservation?
Preservation could take many different sources when you look at the totality of the rent stabilization program encompassing 38,000 units, of which it makes up the big percentage of our overall affordable housing stock. Considering that these properties are naturally occurring affordable units, meaning they were not derived, developed or financed as affordable housing units and are now being used under the rent stabilization program as housing for individuals of extremely low income, this fits well within the definitions of preservation of affordable housing stock because it provides an opportunity to preserve the units and stabilize the low-income families in that regard. In addition, moving forward, as we design the financing program, we'll have to ensure that we are able to balance both the competing interests around utilization of Measure E dollars for the preservation of the units as well as ensuring compliance with the rent stabilization program on mitigating tenant rent increases.
Thank you, thank you. I understand that there may be tenants in ARO units that are not typically receiving a full 5% rent increase. Once these retrofits are required, tenants Once these retrofits are required, tenants that are not usually receiving 5% rent increases are likely to receive such a rent increase going forward. Is it fair to make that assumption?
I think it would be difficult for me at this time, not having looked comprehensively at the data, at the total cap of 5% rent increases on the five-year lookback that we compiled, to provide a direct answer. However, I will say that in the five-year lookback, less than 3%, just about 2.7% on a year-over-year basis, had reached the 5% or exceeded the 5% rent increase cap. So the majority of landlords do not provide or reach that 5% increase. However, there are data anomalies as we look at those tenants who have recently joined the program and are on the process of scaling up to their market rate rent caps. And we are looking at that data to see what the potential impact of this program design might be on those residents as to ensure we can mitigate any displacement actions.
Thank you. Are we aware of how many of these tenants in soft stories are already rent burdened or extremely rent burdened?
I can only speak to the question of those who have exceeded the 5% rent increase caps. I can't speak to right now rent burdened or extremely rent burdened. We can do an analysis of the existing 38,000 units to make determinations based on existing AMI levels as well as existing definitions for rent burden and severe rent burden and come back with that answer.
No, thank you. I just, I want to make sure we're studying that because if we don't have an idea of how this program will impact those who are already rent burdened, that could be a great oversight. So I just want to make sure we are taking the time to do that. What can staff do to identify other sources of funding for this retrofit program?
Other sources of funding would have to go to, similar to how we have to look at ways in which we leverage public dollars with private investments, whether that's looking at the ways in which we fund our emergency interim housing sites, both operations and capital, the way in which we leverage dollars into development, permanent supportive housing or workforce supportive housing, moderate income affordable housing. We'll have to expand the pool of funds to look at ways we can better leverage public and private dollars as well as public dollars from the state and federal. And so we'll be considering that above all approach as we look at financing the entire housing continuum moving forward.
Yes, and there's some particular pots that are potentially available at the state level that we feel we can be very aggressive in going after and would qualify for. Zane has taken us up to Sacramento to talk to some of the key folks around that and preserve that funding within the budget. So that's one of the avenues we think it's quite likely to yield results.
That's great. That was actually going to be my next question, if we were being intentional with looking at funding sources outside of Measure E, and it sounds like we are doing that. Is there any other avenues we're taking to identify other funding?
We will look at other funding sources around preservation strategies as there is a growing interest within private sectors and other non-private borrowers, organizations, and philanthropists who want to look at ways to preserve our existing housing stock. We've made a lot of strides over the last couple of years, so how do we ensure we keep those gains as we also look to new production to add net total units moving forward?
Okay. Thank you. So if we do agree, if the council does agree to utilize these funds from Measure E, how will that impact, you know, current preservation projects like the apartments on Virginia in my district, which we know families are organizing to save, or just the housing projects that are in our, affordable housing projects that are in our pipeline?
The reference Virginia housing project is separate in part, so that's a different grouping of funds.
Oh, so it's a different set of funds?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, different set of funds, so that will have no impact on that. Regarding future preservation items, will there just be a continuing balancing act for this body to consider around how do we best meet both our needs to preserve existing units as well as get to net new production of new units? And that'll be part of the conversation we'll have around Measure E and how do we best allocate that resource, given that it has, you know, limited elasticity at this point? But there's opportunities there as well as leveraging dollars through public partnerships as well.
Well, thank you, Eric, for taking my gauntlet of questions. Appreciate that. You did a good job. So in the memo authored by CM Torres, CM Jimenez, and myself, we recommended attaching additional rent increase restrictions to buildings utilizing funds from the retrofit financing program. I wanted to ask if staff foresaw any issues from this recommendation?
I would recommend at this point, moving forward, with the language of restriction around rent increases, given the following three factors. Number one, in the future implementation of this program, which at a minimum is an 18-month lookout, and then we'll have to look back retroactively, to put artificial restrictions on the increases of those rents beyond what is already encapsulated in the rent stabilization program through the 5% cap would create significant administrative flows as well as impacting a program that's not directly a part of the administration of this program around executing the retrofits. Number two, when we think about rent increases moving forward, part of the challenge of concern is understanding that in addition to these costs, there will be other costs 18 months, two, three years from now, to which both landlords and tenants will need to grapple with. As we've seen from the data, 45% of landlords don't increase their costs at all, despite all of the increases in administration of units over the past years. So putting artificial restrictions on top of rent increases would further limit the ability to flex the program in order to address various concerns. Number three, as we think about the future funding cycles, both recurring and non-recurring revenues that would need to be coalesced in order to finance this program, we'd have to consider what are the impacts on both operating revenue sources to support any future loans or debts put onto this program? And then, two, how do we ensure that that is balanced against the amount of burden that the city side taxpayers are taking on in order to fund this program? Part of the design and the flexibility of this program is to look at ways in which we bring both city dollars, tenant funds, as well as landlord funds to the table in order to best maximize the impact.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate all the answers. Appreciate my colleagues. I wanted to, I guess I'll ask the Vice Mayor if she'd be open to a friendly amendment, and that would be to reinsert Recommendation 1A2, which asks that there'll be an analysis conducted outside of the rent stabilization strategic plan regarding how this will impact renters.
I guess I would ask Eric, you know, you just laid out the three reasons why we probably at this time would be premature. Would this analysis be premature, or is that something that you would be looking at in the future? Because you said, oh, we're going to look 18 months afterwards anyway, so is it necessary?
I think we need to do further researches I had laid forth, and I'm concerned about artificial restrictions that limit a breadth of considerations that probably needs to be brought to the table as we find ways to finance this program.
Okay. So at this time, Peter, I would say that I would not accept that.
No, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate you considering it. I'm going to move for a sub-motion to include Recommendation number two, excluding Subpoint 2A from the mayor's memo. Additionally, incorporating Recommendations 1, 2, 3, and 5 from the memo submitted by Councilmembers Foley, Davis, and Candelas, and modify Recommendation number four to state, revisit the expansion of eligible buildings for retrofit financing programs after the completion of screenings. Thank you.
So there's a substitute with a second. We may need that repeated, just what's in it, but let me go to Councilwoman Torres next.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Thank you for the folks who came out and speak on this very, very important issue. And, you know, for those folks who said that the 1989 earthquake wasn't that big, well, I went to Sacred Heart Church, and my church was closed down for 10 years because of that earthquake. And so our community, our immigrant, Mexican immigrant community, had to raise money to reopen Sacred Heart Church. I also lived in the basement back in the day, and so I couldn't live in my basement after that earthquake. So for a bit, of course. So, yes, it was definitely impactful in California. I do have, I just have a couple of questions since my colleague, Councilmember Ortiz, asked some really important questions, and I got the answer. My two questions are, are there plans to monitor the long-term impact on tenants and property owners after the retrofits are completed?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. The answer is yes. We will need to look at sort of two parts to this. One is, what is the impact post-retrofit completion to ensuring that there aren't gross deviations from existing rent allocations as well as looking at the trends backwards to the number of tenant and landlord increases? You know, part of the good practice that we did in preparation for this program and seeing that 55%, 45% of those who increased and those who don't, and getting to some real granular data, part of that has been now memorialized in our rent stabilization program strategy to then look at all future programs that come back and impact both tenants and units and landlords within the program. How are we monitoring that breadth of impacts in order to be able to ensure that we are making the right decisions moving forward on how best to administer the program will crawl? So we'll be coming back to, as we provide updates on the rent stabilization strategy, which is finally adopted just a few weeks ago, to include what are the impacts of this program moving forward, both on preserving the units, tenant impacts, as well as moving forward with the program and overall administration.
Great. Yeah, no, thank you. And I asked that question because, one, I wholeheartedly think that it's important that we protect tenants during this process because I just don't want to give a government handout to property owners, right, or landlords, however you want to, mom and pop, housing providers, whichever you want to call it. So, and then the other one is, how can the city ensure that landlords who receive financing or rebates don't use the retrofit as an excuse to displace tenants for higher-paying renters?
I would have to consider that question in more within the context of how we ultimately design this program. At this point, I don't have enough foresight into programmatic rules and regulations to then determine how do we ensure that it is not being abused. So as we bring back this financing proposal, I will also include in that an initial set of regulatory actions that we will take as part of the program so that way I can better answer your question within the context of that program design.
Great. And that's why I think it's very important for all of us to be aware of what's happening in this program. Again, I don't want it as a government handout to landlords. And I have friends and family in soft-story buildings. Actually, I was a college student living in a soft-story building, and I definitely want them safe, and I also want them to stay in our community and not be forced out due to economic impacts. And I firmly believe we can do that in crafting this ordinance, and I wholeheartedly support the motion that my colleague, Councilmember Ortiz, just did because it is trying to do just that. So I would challenge the rest of my colleagues to be mindful of what the implications of this ordinance could mean for our ability to combat displacement and continue to generate affordable housing. So I hope my colleague can support Councilmember Ortiz's memo, I mean, motion, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Let me go to, I don't see Councilmember Batra. He may have stepped back, so I'll go to Councilmember Foley. We'll come back to Councilmember Batra.
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak again, but I will now with the substitute motion. Can you clarify for me again, Councilmember, what items are in the motion? I didn't get it all down. Or, Tony, can you let me know?
I can respond. Sorry, I was just having some goldfish. Let me try here. No, you were going to call on me. So include Recommendation number two, excluding Subpoint 2A from the mayor's memo. Additionally, incorporate Recommendations 1, 2, 3, and 5 from the memo submitted by Councilmembers Foley, Davis, and Candelas, and modify Recommendation number four to state, revisit the expansion of eligible buildings for the retrofit financing program after the completion of screenings.
Let me try to repeat back just to make sure I've got it and Tony's got it. So you would include my memo, which adopts the memo, the other two group memos, but you have some modifications of those, but you would strike the modification of 1A2 in your memo, the Ortiz et al. memo, but keeping the rest. In the Ortiz memo, you would keep all of it, is that right?
Yeah.
L-Rex? Okay. So no changes to the Ortiz, Torres, Jimenez memo? And then in the Foley, Davis, Candelas memo, you would only, you would modify Rec. 4, but keep the rest?
1, 2, 3, and 5 as is, and then modify 4.
And can you repeat the modification of 4?
Modify Recommendation 4 to state, revisit the. Revisit the expansion of eligible buildings for the retrofit financing program after the completion of screenings.
After the completion of what? Screens?
Screenings.
So your, our, so the proposal calls for a rebate, but our item 4 indicates a rebate of 50% applied to all property owners, whether they obtained the loan or not. You're scratching that completely, and I just want to be clear in saying that it, after screenings, will revisit a possible finance. Is that it?
Correct.
I have some real concerns with that because we're going to have a finance piece in first part of next year that will disclose to us a potential finance piece. If we wait until the 18 months are over, we're already starting to cut into the construction phase where property owners are required to do the work. We've heard from a lot of property owners and landlords will be, or tenants will be affected, too, that they may not have the money. So the loan benefits the community by giving them the access to funds to do the work if they need those funds. Some may be able to self-fund on their own.
That's true.
Some may not. So I have a difficulty with that. Further.
I'm willing to support that. I'm willing to compromise on that.
Well, the compromise would be that I retain item 4?
Yes.
In its totality?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I heard a friendly amendment, I heard it accepted by the maker of the motion, of the substitute motion. Is the secondor okay with it?
Absolutely.
Okay. So there would be no change to the Foley, Davis, Candelas memo. That would be adopted in whole, in its entirety.
Okay.
So the only difference would be?
The two, is my concerns about your memo.
Yeah.
And let me share those. Because I probably didn't, I didn't focus on it as much because of the original motion.
Okay.
I am concerned in your, in item 1A1, or 1AI, whatever, that says, if Measure E funds are used, direct the city manager to implement restrictions against any additional rent increase higher than the average from the last three years. Any change to the ARO ordinance is under the provision of the city council and not the city manager.
I'll compromise on that one.
The city, well, let me finish. The city manager doesn't have that authority. And the way I read this is that that has to be implemented prior to the ordinance going through. So that means we, as the city council, have to have a full discussion about that rent increase or restricting the rent increase from what's already allowed under city law that was adapted before I was here.
Yeah.
Of up to 5%.
Okay.
So I'm concerned that that discussion, while I'm willing to have it later, if we have that discussion now, it will delay the ordinance again. So that's my concern about it. The other item, I only have concerns about it because we don't have any data yet, and I'd love CED. Originally, I was going to file my own personal memo today till the mayor filed a memo, and my memo was going to say that in two years, so when we have some history, some data, that a report come to CED so we'll be able to analyze any effects on rent increases or rent or effects on tenants and their ability to not meet the rent if it has been increased over that time. But we don't have any data. We only have a theory. We only have a theory that rents may go up, and they may or may not. We already know average rents could go up 5% or rents could go up 5%, but they don't. Landlords sometimes just want to keep their tenant in and raise them two and a half or don't even raise them. So that's my concern. I'm willing to look at having CED take a look at it in two years, once we have data on the second item. On the first item, I just don't want to delay the implementation so we can have that discussion.
So I'm happy to compromise on your guys' memo and accept it entirely. Happy to remove item 1AI, or 1A1, from our memo. But it's really important to me, especially myself, being a renter, having my district, a lot of people are renting, that we can do an analysis on the rent. I'm not saying we have to stick to that data, but I think a study, I'm just asking if we could please get a study.
No, and I agree with that. Can we, can we cross-reference it to CED?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we could cross-reference it.
And can we put a timeframe on it? What's a, Eric, what, when do you think you can have the data you need that you can study to bring back to us?
I think she's coming down.
Oh, okay, sorry. We're on the same page on that.
Okay, thank you.
So we have an annual, Emily Haslip, Division Manager for Rent Stabilization. We have an annual rent registry period. That's when we capture whether there's been an increase. We're just about to enter one. So that will capture this year, and then the next fall will be another one, and then we will capture what's happened in the next year. So...
Okay, so that...
And that's part of our rent stabilization program strategic, that's what I was trying to get at, was that we would fold the reporting into the updates on the rent stabilization strategic plan. That's why I wrote it that way.
Right. We do that all, we do that already, but, so you're getting ready to release one or to study it right now, and then you'll do another one next year. But none of that will have any data related to the soft-story work. That was, that's why I was looking for two years.
Yeah, because we won't have any data.
From ordinance implementation, which will be April, that means it's 2027. And someone else is chairing CED at that point.
Okay. Well, it'd be great if we could get it done, you know, in that amount of time.
18 months?
As long, to me, as long as it's, you know, independent, I don't want to get it caught and lost in the sauce of the regular analysis we're doing with the RSP. I think that's great.
So end of next year, I think it would be a good dataset we would have to then cross-compare the data and then bring that back.
Okay. So then modify to the study to come back, or to come to CED by the end of 2025. Is that?
Yes.
Is that a friendly amendment? Okay.
It's good, good to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
The sausage was made.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, given that there's now not any daylight between the two motions, I'll happily support the substitute. Do we still have hands up? Councilmember Batra.
Thank you very much. After that friendly debate over there and compromises, I want to, first of all, say, Councilmember Foley, we are sorry that you had a personal loss in 89 of the property only, so that's good news for us. I do want to acknowledge that mom and pop, property owners, are the biggest suppliers of our affordable rental properties. And many of them, and the most of them, actually try to keep their rents low enough because they do not want their good tenants to leave, so it's in their self-interest to do it. So we do need to provide support to mom and pops, property owners, in whatever ways we can, to make sure that they can continue to provide these affordable rental properties to us. As Eric found, 45% of them don't even raise the rent, okay? It's not because they're too high that they have reached that, but it is because they want to keep their tenants who are there. So I do want to acknowledge, and I want to say thank you to those property owners there. Now, I want to come to this, this study and the work which is done. There are three parties to it. The staff, which is putting a lot of energy into it, consultant, who you hired to do that and provided excellent input. And there was a third group, which was the HCDC ad hoc committee. I want to know how much of the input you were able to gain from that committee, because, you know, that we like our community to be respected, because they spend their personal time in doing these services for the, for our city. So could you comment on if you got any good input from them, and what were you able to keep in your proposal?
So I can comment on what occurred regarding the HCDC committee, which was before my arrival here in May. In November of 2023, there was a committee of HCDC that compiled and looked at soft-story from various angles. I know there was robust debate and discussion from HCDC in those notes, as well as that presentation. And then subsequent presentations from the original provider of that presentation to HCDC have been provided to me for consideration, and I have shared that with my colleagues. And we've looked at those options, data, and input, and I'd be providing a formal response, as well as a lot of communications I've had with the provider of that presentation over the last couple of weeks.
So I was approached by some of them during this weekend, and continue to get emails from them still. They feel that we have cost too broad in net. And obviously, too broad in net has implications on the amount of work which needs to get done, the cost which has to be borne by everybody. But too broad in net isn't going to hurt the image of the city or the consultant, because being overly safe, if those buildings never suffer any damage, we certainly would be able to claim that we did a good job. So I am concerned about is our criteria. I have a lot of respect for Ray in terms of knowing the EOC stuff and all that. I do understand your additional point about the shaking, but I would strongly suggest that you should please consider, because these people on the ad hoc committee, they were pretty adamant that our net we are costing is too broad and is doing the work unnecessary. Unnecessary work would be okay if we had a ton of money sitting around. And I know these mom and pop people do not have that kind of a money linger. We also don't want to increase the rent on the tenants or forced into that situation. So I'd like to see that balance being achieved. So my recommendation would be is, please look at your net if it is not too broad. If there's any way to simplify that, that would be helpful, okay? I don't have a particular recommendation that this is the way you should go and look for the net. I'm leaving it to the experts. But I do have a concern that our, based on what I've received, our net may be too broad a cost, okay? The second part I want to ask you is, we've chosen a date of April as a start of the program. There is a financing element which is not going to be resolved by April. Would it not be better that if our starting point was synchronized with 1st of July, the beginning of the new budget? What would be, would it be better, or would it be any harm in doing that?
Thank you, Councilmember. The FEMA funds that we have and that we will be awarded for the Phase 2 part of the project for the construction have a finite amount of time to be utilized. So the longer we put off the effective date of this ordinance, the shorter amount of time the property owners have to retrofit their properties and take advantage of this money.
So, so April versus 1st of July, when we have the clarity on our rest of the items relating to this program, what is the deadline for your utilization?
So we anticipate, we will be wrapping up the Phase 1 portion of the project, which is the ordinance implementation and all of the administration, next month. FEMA takes a little bit of time to review that and to award the next phase. We anticipate that's really going to line up with our April 1st deadline. And then what we have is a timeframe of 18 months to three years maximum. We'd have to ask for extensions to get to the three-year point to utilize that money.
So I would like to suggest, as a friendly amendment, that we have the start date for the ordinance to be 1st of July rather than the April.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Batra?
Councilmember Ortiz, I've suggested that the start of the period ordinance could be 1st of July, when we know that the financing items have been all cleared up. It doesn't make it any more difficult, because we still have enough time to utilize the FEMA funds. And it just makes it that the program will be a lot clearer by that time in terms of its financing issues and all that. So 1st of July is what I recommend to be the start date instead of the April.
I don't have any qualms with it, but I'll go to staff and see what their thoughts are.
So, thank you. We do have concerns, Lisa, express deadlines that we have to meet for FEMA. FEMA has been waiting for us to pass this ordinance for quite some time. We want the ordinance passed, because we also want to get the additional $25 million. I think that if we extend the effective date of the ordinance to July 1, then we would probably want to look at shortening the screening phase back down to 12 months, so we can make sure that we're going to be able to meet all of the deadlines requirements from FEMA. We're really up against, against that as well.
No, I wouldn't want to recommend shortening the screening phase. I think we have concerns about people being able to have enough time to be able to plan and find the resources to get that done. So if anything, I would have asked for it to be extended, given more time than to be given less time. So, so that would not be my recommendation at all in that case.
So you retracted your request?
So are you saying that we do have to reduce it, or it is just a...
Yes.
I need to get a answer. Do we need to reduce it, or?
From our understanding, yes, we'd have to reduce the screening time in order to meet the FEMA...
You do have to reduce it?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't want to make that recommendation, because I do want to allow the screening time to be more than 18 months, if at all possible, not less. So if that causes the trouble with the FEMA, no, I don't want that recommendation to be made, okay? So then I'm okay with starting it early. I do want to make one other comment, is that I think you have made in your recommendations that the PLA be applicable whenever the rebates are involved. I'm glad to note that, because I do want to make sure that if public money is involved, that the PLAs are applicable and our union workers get to do their work with the proper returns, okay? You do have that in their recommendation there, right?
Councilmember, are you referring to prevailing wage?
Yes.
Yes, prevailing wage are applicable to these funds.
Right. Because when the public money is involved, I want to make sure that we are certainly going to be supporting that prevailing wage.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Duane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the report. I've looked at, Phase 1 would cost around $75 million, add $50,000 for five units or more to, and that's the minimum cost on Phase 1. Then Phase 2 would cost around $38 million, and then Phase 3 would be around $40 million. So when we look at $6 million we got with FEMA, and then $25 million grant, we've fallen way short of the goal to support these retrofit. My understanding on page 7, staff stated Oakland offer grant covering 75% of the retrofit cost. Why aren't we able to do that? I mean, you know, we're searching for more funding.
The proposal regarding the financing program takes into account the limited resources currently available. In addition, it is my understanding, and I'll ask my colleague, Raisin, Lisa, to opine here, that the Oakland program, given its both scope and impact to the total amount in units, was substantively different than San Jose's, without the first...
Actually, our consultant, David, has information on the Oakland program this year.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm glad you asked about some of the other cities. It's been absent from the conversation so far. Oakland did not have a mandate in place when they had their FEMA grant. San Jose is being much more thoughtful about coordinating their FEMA work with the citywide mandate and seeking more funding from other places in ways that Oakland and San Francisco did not do. So absent a mandate, Oakland was unable even to attract interested owners, and therefore had to offer a much higher rebate amount, and therefore were able to assist far fewer buildings. In fact, they were only able to assist 37 buildings out of the 1,600 that they're eventually going to do.
Okay, thank you. And in the Loma Prieta earthquake, I believe there was like 27,000 damaged structures. And how many of those in there were, you know, the soft story?
Well, I'm unfamiliar with that number. Are you talking about in San Francisco alone, or are you talking about in the Bay Area?
Yeah, just a, just a 27,000 damaged structure at the Loma Prieta earthquake. Majority of it is obviously in San Francisco and Oakland.
I'm not sure the majority, well, the majority of the buildings are there. The short answer is I don't, I don't know the answer to your question. We can look that up. But I think it's, the important context there is that, given their experience, San Francisco then passed a mandatory retrofit ordinance that covered 4,900 buildings, and Oakland passed a mandatory retrofit ordinance that is going to cover 1,600 buildings.
Would you say, in your professional opinion, if there's an earthquake that is large enough to topple a two-to-four-story high, would that affect the majority of the building or homes in San Jose, there are around 375,000 homes, at that level of earthquake would be tumble as well? Because if it's going to topple a second-story or fourth-story high building?
Councilmember, we did address that question in the report. It's in section 1.3 somewhere, where we looked at all the residential buildings in the city. Obviously, when you have an earthquake of that magnitude, it affects an entire area, so it will hit all of San Jose, and any vulnerable, vulnerable building will be hurt. But if you find the table in that section of the report, you'll see that the soft-story buildings actually are more at risk than the single-family, or the mobile homes, or the other residential buildings.
And then earlier, pardon me, you stated that, yes, I understand the shaking will cause a lot of the damage, but at the five-square block in San Francisco was on landfill and liquid faction, does that play into the formulation that causes that much damage?
It does. The nature of the soil and the softness of the soil and how it resonates with the frequency of the ground shaking does have an effect. But as we also discussed earlier, San Jose is liquefiable in soft soil throughout most of the city.
So therefore, I would anticipate there'll be major damages throughout the whole city, then?
Because there are soft-story buildings throughout the whole city.
Yeah, and if I could, just quoting from the California Earthquake Hazard Zone website, they talk about the hazard zones being the fault rupture, the liquefaction, of course, the earthquake-induced landslide areas. And then right below that, they say, and I'm quoting directly from the website, although strong ground shaking is responsible for most earthquake-related damage, comma, these zones identify where earthquake hazards, other than structural shaking, specifically ground failure during an earthquake, are more likely. So it, again, with these types of buildings, it is specifically the ground shaking that we are most concerned about, and certainly being in a liquefaction or on a fault zone or on the landslide will make it worse. But it is the shaking which is available, or which is responsible for most of the earthquake damage and for which we're most concerned, and that is something that can happen across the board in San Jose.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz, I'd like to put in a friendly amendment to accept my memo in there, because it's allow, without people who are living outside of the hillside, the landslide, the liquid faction, to be penalized. And in the end, the result is that, you know as well as I do, and... And in the end, the result is that you know as well as I do, and I think all of our colleagues as well, the costs eventually will filter down to the renter. And with all these mandate, eventually our renter is going to be paying the price, not anyone else. And I hope you would consider that, Councilmember Ortiz.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Dwan, for your friendly recommendation. Unfortunately, I'm going to deny it at this time. Thank you so much.
Okay. And Councilmember Dwan, were you done? I saw your mic still on.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make a couple of quick comments, just because this is such an important item and I... Thoughts have been raised as the conversation's been happening. Obviously, I think there's been a lot of work on staff's part to balance the needs of tenants and landlords, property owners. The way I look at it is that if we lose just one soft-story building during an earthquake that results in loss of life, it would be hard for me as a council member to look back and say, we didn't take action to protect people. And so I will err on the side of protecting as many residents as possible by retrofitting buildings that were not up to current code based on the staff's expertise of what those units are. I'd also want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful memos and strong arguments to help us balance all the needs that we're responsible for as a council. I just have one quick question. There's going to be this screening process and people will receive a notification that their building has been identified. But once the ordinance goes into place next April, if some property owners say, hey, I want to get ahead of this and I want to do it now, they can begin to take advantage of this financing and start early. Is that correct?
At the termination of the screening period, yes, they would be able to because we would have it in place.
It would have to be the termination of the screening period.
Right.
So that first 18 months, nobody could come forward and say, I'd like to start this process and get ahead of it. That's... So that's not possible.
The program wouldn't be in place in time at that point. If we can speed up the expedition of the program based on the considerations around the funding sources, we're happy to consider how to speed that up. But as of right now, the funding wouldn't be available. We'd have to put that program requirement together.
So the funding won't be available until the end of September, until September of 2026? That's 18 months after.
Councilmember Cohen, I think that what we can take a look at as the financing program is being developed and finalized, for those building owners who want to get a head start and we want to encourage them to do that, I think we can look at a provision for them being able to take advantage of the program because they got started as long as they met the criteria of the program. So it's almost like in retrospect, right? So I think that's something we should definitely take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like to encourage that we...
Like a retroactive.
That we encourage any way possible getting moving on this. Obviously, it's... My fear of this whole program, my biggest fear, is whether or not there's enough engineering and contractor resources available for people to meet our timeline. And certainly, if some folks know they're going to need to do this retrofit and they can begin to do that before the rush begins, that would be beneficial to everybody. So I would hope that we would be able to try to accelerate that as we move forward.
Yes, councilmember. We'll look at how we explore that, maybe utilize some of the existing FEMA funds to put something together so we can make sure.
Is there anything that we should... Does it need to be put into the motion here or you take that as a question that you'll move forward?
We'll take that as a question.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Great. Looks like we've exhausted everybody's questions and comments. We have a motion on the floor. Is that a hand? Okay. Councilmember Batra, quickly, you get the last word.
As I emphasized before, I am concerned about the net cost. It's too broad, probably need to be looked at. And I think Councilmember Dwan has offered you an opportunity to exempt certain buildings based on certain criteria. So Councilmember Ortiz, I would suggest that you consider his motion or a friendly motion he asked you to get that, the criteria be inclusive of that, maybe combination of something so that there's a possibility of the buildings, the right buildings can be exempted from there without additional cost and requiring engineers' time.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Batra. Like I said, I appreciate Councilmember Dwan's recommendation. I'm nervous about reducing the scope of the project and then learning somebody gets hurt in one of those properties that we chose to remove from scope. And so that is what is preventing me from accepting, just so that you know why I'm doing. I didn't have to explain that, but I wanted to explain it to you as a pleasant...
No, I truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think we did mention to the housing director and others that they should look at it if there's anything they can come back with to make it... Nobody wants to compromise our safety here, but it's a question is, we don't go too far without realizing that there's a cost and angle to it, okay? So...
Okay. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you all very much. We are moving on. Okay, that was item 8.3. Next is land use. We are on to item 10.2. There is a brief staff presentation. And as staff is selling into the box, I'm just going to turn to Vice Mayor Kamai, who I believe needs to recuse herself on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the council know that on this item, I do have to recuse myself for potential conflicts of interest as been advised by the city attorney.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you shortly. Okay, so if staff is ready, we have a brief presentation on item 10.2. This is the plan development permit at 2919 South King Road. We'll have the brief staff presentation. We'll allow the applicant to speak for up to five minutes. We'll go to public comment and then we will come back to council for deliberation and a vote. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Burton, Director of Planning Building Code Enforcement, joined by John Tu, Division Manager for Planning, and Jason Lee, who's our project manager on this project. I will bypass much of the presentation just to remind council that this is the item that came before them a couple of weeks ago, just on a monopole on a self-storage site just off of King Road. Council had requested we go back and do additional outreach with the community. So staff held a community meeting on September 16 at Tully Library in coordination with Councilmember Dwan's staff, who were also present. Staff were available to answer questions as were representatives from AT&amp;T. And there was an ongoing conversation then from there to try and answer any questions that members of the public had. So we're returning with the project to recommend approval per our previous recommendation.
Okay. Thank you for the update and for holding the community meeting. We are going to allow the applicant, if we have a representative from AT&amp;T. Here we go. And you have, once you begin speaking, up to five minutes. And then we'll go to public comment. Tony, can we turn that mic on?
It's on.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you also, Councilmember Dwan, for attending the community meeting we had last week. I don't have much to say. It's just sort of more of a Q and A here with representing AT&amp;T as an applicant. We do have AT&amp;T, other folks from AT&amp;T in the crowd if there's any questions you may have for us. But I'll just keep it really brief and go sit down.
Okay. All right. So we have folks from AT&amp;T here in case there are questions from the council. So we'll now go to public comment. Tony, do we have comment cards on 10.2?
Yes. When I call your name, please come down in no particular order. First person in the microphone, go ahead and start speaking. The other names I call, please sit in this front row where the seats are reserved. I have Khan Tran, Tian Nguyen, Garub Dasteder or Pasteder, and Luang Dwong. So let's start with those.
Hello, Mayor and councilmember. My name is Khan. I was here last time to speak for our residents. I'm here representing 64 house residents and 110 people who signed the petition. And one of our big... A lot of our members are here will talk about certain issue, but one of our big issue is the distance from the tower and where we live. It is a 55-feet-tall tower and it's going to be built on 60-feet distance where you sit and 60-feet across from you. It's not very far. We are dense resident area. We also have a mobile home area. And within that 60-feet, if you just look at it, we have a family daycare center, a daycare family that we have two to five years old age group. So, you know, as resident, we are a family of kids, elders, and we lived there for a long time. And we just want to know why is the distance so close? I've done my research. A lot of resource say that recommendation is the feet distance is 1,320 feet would be ideal. But this is 60-feet. Just imagine, you sit there, 60-feet is like a few road back there and your house is right there where you raise your kids and we have elders and we have hospice people in the resident. So this brings a lot of fear and anxiety to us. We're just regular people. We're mother, father. We have kids. We have child. We have people who are pregnant right now and we have people who's on home health and hospice. This is a lot of fear for us. We're not, you know, professional. And we did have a community meeting and it was more...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker. I believe our next speaker has a PDF they're sharing, so just a reminder, the timer. I just want to remind the speaker, we're not going to be able to show the timer, but there's a timer on your podium.
Okay. Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. Okay. My name is Tian. I live in that neighborhood and I would like to bring up the concern of our neighborhood about the impact of the property values, the aesthetic and the change of a community and the block view of our nearby houses. And can you go to slide number three, please? And AT&amp;T shared their real estate valuation and we think is misleading and biased because the article, they reference from Joy Ventures Silicon Valley Network. And we see that the, this organization, the big corporation, and member of the wireless communication backed by AT&amp;T and who worked for AT&amp;T for 25 years in marketing. And slide number four, please. Okay. This article tells us that the AT&amp;T towers are very well-planted in the environment. And we couldn't see that where it is because it's a natural environment surrounding that. And slide number five, please. And in this, we couldn't identify which cell for cell tower it is, but can we go to slide number six, please? This is our neighbors and they have very good view of the mountain line. But now, slide number seven, please. With 55-foot cell towers, it blocked our view now. And from a window, we don't see any view for up to the mountain. So here it is, some view from our windows. So AT&amp;T...
That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello, councilmembers. Yeah. So with regard to property value in particular, AT&amp;T provided a survey to us in the outreach event, which tried to show that there is not really an effect on property values with tower. But looking closer into the article, there is a market study done which confirms with actual property sales and some regression analysis that these cell towers have a negative impact on the prices of houses in their study areas. Next slide, please. And this is backed by many different studies that we've seen from the National Association of Realtors where there's nearly a 7% decrease in property values as well as in the case of properties which have direct viewpoints of the tower, it's nearly a 10% decrease, which is really concerning to us as property owners. Next slide, please. And with regards to safety, there's another thing that we were able to see within our research is the risk regarding lightning strikes with the large metal tower near our homes as well as the AT&amp;T's use case of finding a tower that's near residential power lines and any safety risks regarding that and how close the residential units are to it. Next slide, please. And finally, with regards to the CEQA exemption, there needs to be some more study with regards to aesthetics and noise. The construction of this tower is going to disrupt the nearby neighborhood in ways that haven't been very much disclosed to us very much. And what are the effects that we're going to see and once the tower is employed? What is the noise? What is the heat dissipation? How is this going to affect our lives on a daily...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and city councilmember. I'm James from the neighborhood. I just want to summarize. So the Telecommunication Act of 1996 still allows local government and authority to regulate placement, construction of wireless facility and zoning laws. And for the reason of like community aesthetics and property value, as long as it doesn't prohibit service to the area. And as of now, we talked to AT&amp;T and they said as of now, the service area they want, there's no issue of them providing the service. So I think there's time for them to look at alternatives and find a better place, maybe smaller towers in multiple locations to cover the area they want. There are some cases we found where the city did protect their, the local community on the basis of property value and aesthetics, and they were successful in blocking those specific location of the cell towers. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah, this slide. That's good. So there are many laws, rules and regulations and guidelines like having susceptible landscape around the tower. That's part of the guideline of the city council that, and that the CEQA that AT&amp;T is allowed to bypass all of this. So we think the city needs to do like the due diligence and make sure AT&amp;T does everything that they, to put in a different, a better location. We have some alternatives that they didn't seem to put much effort into looking if they can put into alternate locations where we would be happy with. And also the vacant lot, there's like another adjacent area where there will be some space in between the building anyway. So this opportunity to put it there, we'd be happy there too where you can plant more trees and make it blend in with the environment. That's better. So there's some other cases we show where the city protect their neighborhood and we hope that you can help us today in finding something.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Alan Deng and Hao Jiang.
Good afternoon. I'm here to support the petition against the construction of the AT&amp;T cell tower. And the reason is that we are concerned about the property value and aesthetics besides the effects of, the negative effects of health and radiation. And we are against it. And we are against it. And may I suggest that if anything, you can have AT&amp;T move the tower away, far away from our residents, our, our property. There's a lot of open land, a lot around the planned construction. So, that may be helping us in the future. And we're, we're going to live there for a long time, maybe for the left, our lifetime. So, we are very concerned and please help us reduce the risk of the, the bad things. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Dear Mayor and City Member, my name is Alan Deng. I'm here on behalf of, uh, for sixty-four house and total one hundred and ten who have signed this petition to request AT&amp;T cell phone tower to move far away from our neighbor. If possible, we, we want the city stop AT&amp;T build the cell phone very close to our neighbor. Last week, we have a meeting with AT&amp;T, it not compromise to us. The meeting is a waste of time. We believe AT&amp;T can relocate their cell phone tower, but they are not willing to do it. There too many is here from them. We buy, we buy our dream house here. We picked this location because there are no power station, no cell phone. It's our dream house. Now, it's not our dream house anymore. It's a nightmare place. If you unhappy, if you angry, you point this and harmony, uncomfortable living here, give us AT&amp;T cell phone tower, we can judge him here. Please help us, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council and staff. I would like to have a, to talk about, to talk about two things. We are not happy when we open door to see the cell tower every day. We are not happy when we drive by the tower every day. And we are not happy when we take a walk around the neighborhood to see the tower every day. The second, the value of the house around the cell tower is going to be less value. Please stand by your people. With your voice is our voice. And with your position, you can make a difference and make the people have a happy life. And you can make the people have a peaceful life. Please stand by us and hear our voice. And God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, that was our last speaker, back to council.
Thank you, Tony. Well, thank you to all the residents who came out to voice your opinions this evening. I'm going to turn to colleagues, we have a number of hands up. And we will start with Councilman Duwan, whose district this site is located within.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like the AT&amp;T representative to come down, please. So, at the community meeting, were you able to address majority of the concerns or all of the concerns?
At the community meeting, we were able to do our best to answer the questions that they had as far as why this location was chosen, why on this particular property it was chosen. We, we presented numerous explanations for, for both questions, like why specifically this area and also why this property and we're on the property. But we, we did our best to answer the questions everybody had, yeah.
So, in this particular geographical area, is there any problem regarding services for that? Particular quarter of a mile?
Yeah, and we actually have an AT&amp;T RF engineer here as well. The, this, the search ring was, was presented as there, this is, there's a gap in coverage as a whole, as, as you may. And that's identified in, in the coverage maps that we shared at the community meeting that this particular site is, 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 was located to close that gap between numerous other surrounding cell sites.
There's a lot of question asking, why can't you use newer, newer technology in order to close up that gap with the existing monopole?
With an existing site?
Yes.
Correct, yeah. There, the closest facility is about a third of a mile to the east. It's at, at the shopping center, um, off of Aborn. It's on a, on a rooftop, it's about thirty feet tall. That, that site is still, would still be on air. It, it cannot be modified. It, it, it would have to increase twenty, thirty feet high on top of a rooftop. And if, even if that, it may not actually cover the gap in this area.
Is it feasible to, even that site, to build a monopole that is high enough to be able to get to coverage?
I don't believe in this area, and speaking with AT&amp;T, that, that would, when AT&amp;T issues search rings, the first thing they do is they look at their existing sites around and determine if upgrading, just merely upgrading those facilities could close these service gaps. In this case, it, they can't.
So, I want to recap, is there any other feasible site beside that particular site? I know that you talked about the church. And I think that it was not a monetary agreement that was a problem. Am I correct?
With, with the church?
Yes.
They, the, AT&amp;T had approached the Baptist church on King Street. There was a variety of issues within the lease that AT&amp;T and the property owner, their, their counsel cannot come to and, and agreement with. This is right across the street from the entrance to Store Quest, this, this particular particular site.
And according to AT&amp;T, there is no other feasible site that can be considered at this point?
Correct, we've exhausted this, this search ring with the only, only property that is, is, um, that is available as far as meets zoning requirements and also has willing landlord. Just to note, this landlord does have a signed lease with AT&amp;T in place. The, the, the majority of the search ring is, is about three quarters of it is, is single-family residential homes. So, it's very difficult to find a location. We're tasked to look at commercial, industrial, light industrial type properties in this area. And there were a few that we looked at. And this is the one that meets all the requirements as far as, is it, can you get a zoning permit? Is it zonable? Is there a willing landlord that meet the coverage objectives? And this, this meets all the requirements.
And did you reach out to the, um, I, I believe the name of the place, um, the, the rockery place that, that supplies the landscape material?
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of parcels that are owned by the same individual. This is, this is where, there's an Ace Hardware, this Payless Hardware store on King. Their property starts on King, one of the parcels starts on King. And then it's, it's a backlot that actually starts at Aborn Road. So, it goes behind all the lots along King. That's all one, one property. They, they were not interested.
Okay. And can you tell me what the time-weighted average, when you do your study of a person who, you know, immobilized or staying there twenty-four, seven versus a, an average person who go to work, by time to get home, they, they spent approximately anywhere between twelve hours or more in, in their home?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't-
The time-weighted average, meaning how effective it is with these particular microwaves or RF affect the person for a resident to live in that area? Is it consider high enough or low enough, um, in, in the RF?
You're talking about RF propagation?
Yes.
It's, we're within the, in the, in the, actually well with under the, well under the requirements of the FCC as far as, far as RF. The distance to the nearest homes, the height of the tower, it all comes into play as far as, as far as RF exposure.
How would you compare the property value up in Communication Hill versus down where the proposed monopole?
I, I don't, I'm not a real estate expert, I don't-
So, so, did the, here's, let me rephrase that. Did the property up in Communication Hill, and I know you have like two towers, very tall, very large?
Mm-hmm.
Did it reduce the property value with those cell towers up there?
It's, it's hard for me to speak to that, other than I live in Communication Hill. And I, I haven't noticed any neighbors speaking of, of property values lowering in, in my neighborhood. Those towers have been there for a long time, the neighborhood was, was built around them.
That is correct. And, and, and my understanding, the pricing over in Communication Hill continue to rise?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Well, you, you live in the neighborhood-
Just from my, yeah, just from my own personal experience. But I don't have real estate numbers. But yeah, I mean, generally speaking, I, I would say over the course of fourteen years on Communication Hill, that property values have increased.
So, I just want to be clear. Absolutely, unequally, there is no other site is feasible at this point in order to put that monopole?
Not in this location, no.
And is it under the, the federal guideline that we cannot interfere with the services for the community?
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I could let the city attorney speak more to that. But, but just generally speaking, wireless facilities are overseen by the FCC. There's RF reports that are prepared that are, and when they're in compliance with what the, what the, what the, what the federal, with FCC allows, if the RF report is in compliance, then concerns regarding RF, for example, cannot be on a basis of, you know, approval or denial from a jurisdiction.
Thank you, I got a question for staff. How long have you been working with AT&amp;T in order to, 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 to find location and, and determine what is the best geographical area?
We don't personally go find sites for them. We do ask a lot of questions, sorry, John Two Division Manager. We do ask them a lot of questions as part of the report, then their analysis. What considerations have you taken? What is the coverage area? Uh, as he stated during the community meeting, there was a lot more of a discussion and insight where he called out specifically the geographic ring, search ring, looked at the different sites that they inquired to, what, what they could or could not do at those specific sites and why this site meet, met a lot of the parameters. So, based on that and all those other analysis, it's consistent with our policies. But we don't actually go out to look for those sites for their behalf. But we do question them when they do choose a location.
Thank you, I, I yield my time.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Let's go to Councilmember Ortiz next.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I just want to thank staff. I know that during the last meeting, I, myself and Councilmember Duwan requested that staff took time to meet with the community. And I really appreciate that that effort was taken. And I also want to thank, um, members of the community for being here as well. You know, it's very important to be involved in, you know, matters that impact your neighborhood as well as matters that impact your, your home. And, you know, I know that you all are just advocating for what you think is best for yourself and your family. So, I just want to appreciate that you're here. And also, you know, I hope that you guys continue to organize, you know, for the betterment of your neighborhood and, you know, identify ways in which you can improve the community as well. Just wanted to know if we could bring the gentleman back down from AT&amp;T? Sorry, I waited for you to get all the way back there. Just a really quick question. I'm, I'm not sure if, I don't know if Councilmember Duwan mentioned it. But is there any data supporting that, um, I guess the technology being used at this tower could have negative effects on, you know, women who are pregnant with having a baby or any sort of like health impacts on families?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of data that, um, I'm not the RF expert. We had a planning commission meeting, we had the last city council meeting, and we had the community meeting last week in which we did have the RF expert there and all, at all points, those, um, that, that person did discuss in, in detail the FCC requirements and any kind of studies that he's seen related to it. But in, in my experience, doing a lot of permits like this for all the different carriers, doing community meetings, um, working in the, with planning commissions and city councils, that, um, there's, there's, there's nothing that I've seen from the meetings I've been to that would allude to me to believe that there's an issue with them provided you're, you're meeting all the FCC requirements.
Okay. No, thank you. Straightforward question, appreciate you asking that. And, you know, in, in regards to this, as a city council, when AT, just so I explain to the public, when AT&amp;T does their due diligence, they're, they're following, you know, city policy, municipal policy, you know, we really don't have too much discretion. Uh, if they're making sure they're following, you know, what's required by them by law, it's intention, it is essentially our job to support it. But that doesn't mean, you know, we definitely appreciate you guys being here. And, you know, what you guys advocating is definitely honorable. So, thank you for, for taking the time to be at the meeting. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Batra.
Thank you very much, staff, for your presentation or today, just to recall of staff. Thank you to the community members for coming and expressing your opinion and utilizing our well-established democratic processes to exercise your rights in the community. I do have a couple of questions for the staff. Or for the AT&amp;T gentleman. You're getting a lot of exercise here, back and forth. Uh, excuse me for that. Now, I do have a question for you. Uh, you indicated that there was a gap in services in this area and you're trying to fill that gap by having this tower there. Is that affecting the emergency services? Like if somebody was trying to make a call to nine-one-one? Are they not able to or difficult to make it?
Sorry, I don't have the exact numbers. I don't know if, if Enrico, you have information like that? Enrico's actually with AT&amp;T RF engineer. He's, he's basically our customer. We're trying to provide this site. It just, in short, um, just to reiterate is that this site would, would include nine-one-one. Like all cell towers would include a nine-one-one, but also has FirstNet, which is the emergency responder, which San Jose and Santa Card County are both subscribers. As far as actual nine-one-one drop calls, I don't, I don't know if you have anything to speak about that as far as, you know, the, the actual data on that. But part of these cell towers is to, is to service the, kind of the underserved areas for, for emergency response.
Yeah. Yes, it, it would certainly, if, if the nine-one-one calls are not going through, that's a big gap in service, right? Uh, because the life could be lost just because you couldn't get through the call in a timely manner. So, I just wanted to highlight if we knew about that, whether the calls are nine-one-one or going through or not, okay? So, uh, if we don't have the data, can we get a comment on it or, or not?
Councilmember, I can kind of speak on it. If there's a service ring gap, not a lot of airwaves, it makes it harder when there's a lot of calls, when there is an emergency. So, therefore, FirstNet, what it does, it prioritizes emergency. I'm, I'm assuming you can probably describe this better than I can.
Hi, good afternoon, sorry. Um, so the, we're trying to fill the coverage gap in the area. So, that, that means the-
You're just talking to the mic, thanks, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, um, so if there is low signal in, in the area, you'll have difficulty making a call. So, that includes nine-one-one calls as well, regular calls are nine-one-one.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, uh, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chris, one of the resident made a comment about that the towers have to be located a certain distance away. Are we from the homes and there is a code? Did we give an- any exemptions from the code to this particular tower, or they were within the code?
They meet the code, uh, I think it's generally one foot for a one foot of height setback, so they're approximately 60 feet for a 50-foot tower, the one thing they did reference was there's a council policy that encourages co-location of trees when possible, given the locations already, uh, developed many storage, it wouldn't be possible to put additional trees located in those areas, it's not atypical to see certain sites with just a, one specific model pine, so they did meet the policies and the setback requirements.
So, so no real exception was made there, it was within the prescribed rules, okay. The other one, uh, comment was made about the SEQA, uh, did we give them a discretionary uh, freedom not to do the SEQA, or the SEQA was not required?
Uh, Councilmember, the, uh, the project was found exempt under SEQA, so we do an initial screening analysis, and then we find that it meets the criteria under one of the exemptions, so it, it did SEQA, it was found exempt under the statute.
Okay, so, so it checked all the boxes needed to get the SEQA exemption, okay?
All right, we are on, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, I'm done.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, Councilmember, let's go to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you, um, I'll just be quick, um, look, it was interesting juxtaposition to receiving an email today from a resident near Allen Rock Park, who was saying they don't have enough cell service, um, and wanted AT&amp;T to put more in near their home because they don't have coverage and they're concerned about emergencies, so we, you know, I, I know that, that it's, what's important here, and what AT&amp;T is trying to do, and what many of our carriers are trying to do, is, is improve coverage, especially as use is increasing, and this isn't just about day-to-day use, but about increasing volume, whether it's during an emergency, or also building for future of Internet of Things, and, and the need for a 5G connected network that will, um, have capacity for future use, and so I understand, I know AT&amp;T is not putting in towers just for the sake of putting in towers, that they know that what they need for, um, for making sure that they have that capacity for the future, um, I do, I do feel, get concerned, as I, knowing what I'm putting, the risk I'm putting myself in, by carrying my cellphone in my pocket, by using my cellphone up to my head when I talk to people, um, the, the science is pretty clear that Wi-Fi routers in people's homes and their cellphone use are, are actually risks in terms of RF exposure, and that the cell towers, especially as 5G, because of the quicker dissipation of the waves, is, um, low risk, and so, um, just want to, uh, repeat that point from the conversation we had last month, I, I know, nobody's willing to make the motion at this point, we have a, a, some before us, I'll make a motion to, to move forward and approve the, um, the, I think it's a rezone, right, at this site?
Sorry.
Thank you, I guess that's it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Dewan?
Thank you, I just, um, after several meeting with AT&amp;T and city personnel, including community meeting, which presented a thorough review of the site, and alternate, uh, alternative presented, it is clear that there is no other feasible location within the proposal site that would meet the project requirement effectively. Furthermore, we have carefully evaluated the health and safety implication of the monopole installation, based on a comprehensive study and assessment, we can reasonably confirm that there is no health risk to the neighbors surrounding the site. The project adhered to all regulatory standard, ensuring the safety and well-being of the community, the project actually is below the standard, way below the standard that is required. This project is particularly significant, and it is, will play a crucial role in closing the digital divide in the area. Their area where this monopole is proposed have been severely underserved, leading to connectivity issues felt by our student, working professional, and all other as well. By enhancing the connectivities in this underserved area, we can provide more equitable access to information, education, resources for our, for our children, and opportunity for residents of all ages in San Jose, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, we have a motion on the floor, I don't see any other hands, doesn't look like we have any further deliberation, Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes with Kame absent, motion passes unanimously with Kame absent.
That's right, okay, thank you, we will invite the Vice Mayor to come back out, we are on to item 10.3, which also has a brief staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, item 10.3 is a planned development rezoning, planned development permit, planned tentative map, um, and, um, associated environmental review, uh, at 1334 and 1348 Miller Avenue. So the project has, uh, multiple components, but ultimately, uh, what we're looking at here is a project that will take, um, two lots with, uh, two existing single-family homes and associated structures, um, and divide the site into seven single-family lots and one duplex lot, um, that will allow the construction of five detached single-family residences, two attached single-family residences, and a stacked duplex reserved as affordable to lower-income households. So just to orient you on the project location, this is Miller Avenue, you'll see the two sites there, um, across from Tucker Drive, um, the site has a residential neighborhood general plan designation, um, the existing zoning is R18, uh, single-family residential, and it's planned to go to an R18 PD, planned development rezoning. So the project was reviewed, uh, for conformance with the general plan, municipal code, um, the city's design standards and guidelines, um, it, the project review met the requirements of 6-30, the public outreach policy for development projects, um, it was also reviewed for consistency with state density bonus law, I'm going to get into that a little bit more in just a second, um, as well as associated, um, SEQA clearance. So, uh, relative to the state density bonus law, um, this allows waivers and reductions of local development standards that are presumed to physically prevent a project from being built, uh, at the permitted density, so under density bonus law, the development standards include all local city conditions, laws, policies, resolutions, and regulations, um, including the citywide design guidelines and local programs such as the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, so waivers and concessions under density bonus can be approved, um, if the, sorry, must be approved, if we can't, um, if the, sorry, excuse me, waivers and concessions must be approved if the findings for disapproval laid out in state law cannot be made, um, specifically to deny a density bonus, uh, request, um, the waiver must be found to have a specific adverse impact on local health and safety, and adverse impact on property listed in the historic, the California Register of Historic Resources, or be contrary to state or federal law. So the reason we're touching on, um, density bonus law with this project, is that the project does include waivers, um, a waiver request for four standards that are included in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, um, so staff had concerns with these waivers from a fair housing perspective, however, um, we did coordinate with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, um, and after those discussions, staff is still recommending approval of the project, uh, because HCD's opinion was that the findings to disapprove the waivers would be difficult to make in this instance. Uh, HCD has stated that the requests are not contrary to state and federal law, um, as the concerns and requirements in the IHO are a local program, not state and federal. The planned development rezoning request, um, is required, um, it's a, a remnant of the original 2021 submittal of the project, um, should council not approve the rezoning for this project, it could technically be resubmitted in its identical form as a site development permit, with the same density bonus concessions and waivers, uh, which would then move forward through a director's hearing process. So for environmental review, we did, uh, complete an initial study and negative declaration that was circulated on October 27th, um, of last year, two clarifying comments were received from Valley Water and PG&E that did not result in substantial changes, um, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration found impacts related to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and noise, um, but with the implementation of identified mitigation measures, um, all identified impacts would be reduced to a less than significant level. So with that, staff is, uh, recommending, uh, adoption of the resolution, um, adopting the, um, uh, 1334 and 1348 Miller Avenue Residential Subdivision Project, mitigated negative declaration, um, approve an ordinance rezoning the project site from R18 to R18 PD, adopt a resolution approving subject to condition, investing tentative map, and adopt a resolution subject to conditions, a planned development permit, um, for the associated project, and with that, staff is available for questions.
Great, thank you, Chris, appreciate it, okay, we're going to invite the applicant to come on up and speak for up to five minutes, then we'll go to public comment, and then come back to the council. Welcome.
We can move through this presentation, so, my name is Melanie Griswold, and I represent a small, local developer on this project. In the audience, we have Dean Nguyen, the designer, Gia Lee, the development manager, Stephanie Yee, the ownership, owner, and Brian Winter of Miller Star Legal Counsel, and we're here to, and available to answer questions. As mentioned, this project is located on Miller Ave, it's a great neighborhood, it is a high-resourced neighborhood, and the site is located close to, uh, public schools and high-quality public transportation. The site as it stands now, though, is a classic example of land that is being underutilized. Currently, there are two single-family homes located on it, one that is in poor condition, that is just under 1,100 square feet, and another one that is 2,300 square feet. The goal of this development was to utilize the land better, and it was to bring single fam, a single-family development that was consistent with the neighborhood into this site. With that in mind, the team originally proposed a design that was six single-family homes and ADUs, but what we learned was that with SB 330, there was a requirement to incorporate two affordable units onto the project. Now, as you can imagine, dedicating two-thirds, or one-third of the site to affordable units at a actual cost of approximately $5 million between the construction cost and the land, would have been absolutely infeasible for a small development like this, and so the team really had to take a step back, go back to the drawing board, and figure out, how can we bring affordable units onto the site, how can we comply with the state law, but also make a feasible project that fits with the neighborhood? And so what you have is something that we're very, very proud of, it's a unique development, it has a mix of unit types that is fairly unusual for something that's so small, we have five single families, five ADUs, two attached single-family homes, two stacked flats that are affordable, and a mix of rental and for-sale units. And with this mix of unit types comes affordable housing, some of which is naturally-produced affordable housing in the form of ADUs and the attached single families, and then we also have deed-restricted affordable housing in the form of the two condominium units. But what we're most proud of, of this design and this project, which a lot of credit needs to go to Dean Nguyen, the project designer, is how much time and attention was placed on the actual design of the project. So as you can see from the elevations in this project, this is not a cookie-cutter corporate development where everything looks the same. A lot of time and effort was put into the material choices, the design, trying to create a beautiful development where people are going to be excited to live in it, and we know from the realtors who are on the development team, who have placed hundreds of people into homes, that each and every one of these units are ones that are going to be in high demand, that people will be excited to move into. One of the things that I wanted to discuss, it was really important to the developer, so as mentioned, it's a local developer, was that the project was going to be consistent with the neighborhood, and that it was going to be something that the neighborhood, that the neighbors supported, and so we see with the development and the size of the units that are being produced, that our development is similar to the unit sizes that are surrounding the neighbors, so some of which are smaller, some of which are larger. And the development team has engaged in neighborhood outreach, so in addition to the mandated community meeting, we have, um, conducted some canvassing of the neighbors, and so far, we are not aware of any neighbors that have, are opposed to the project. Skip over the SEQA mitigation. Why don't you go back? So I've got to go back one slide, but I'm not sure, what's that? Oh, he goes back, okay, so ironically, one of the most controversial parts of this project has been the affordable housing units, and building the units on-site, and you have a letter...
That's your five minutes.
Yeah, we're here to answer any questions that you've got, um, but if you, I'm sure we'll address you later, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, all right, Tony, do we have public comment?
Yeah, I have one card, Yuki Zhou.
All right, come on down, and you'll have two minutes once you begin.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Yueqi Zhou. Earlier this year, in February, I moved back to the Bay Area to be closer to my family after spending nearly 15 years on the East Coast. It didn't take long to realize that finding affordable housing here in the Bay Area, especially on a non-tech salary, is an uphill battle. Right now, now ashamed to admit that my parents are generously helping me out with my first year of rent, but soon, I'll have to find housing that I can afford on my own, ideally not too far away from work. This is why I'm here today, to express my strong support for housing development, particularly affordable housing, and housing with ADUs in this very desirable neighborhood, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to council.
All right, thank you, so coming back to the council, I'm going to turn to Vice Mayor Kame, in whose district the project, proposed project is.
Thank you very much, um, one of the things that is, is very clear to me, and, you know, having, uh, uh, known about the project, is that this is a, a very, very unique development, and the fact that they are going to be providing affordable housing in a highly desirable area, I think it's a tremendous benefit, so, um, I, I do think that Dean has done a great job in terms of trying to also look at, you know, what would fit into the neighborhood, and, you know, have similar, uh, characteristics, uh, and I think that it's going to be a wonderful project, so I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Great, Councilmember Dewan? Councilwoman Duong?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm going to echo what Vice Mayor said. I think it's important that we continue with affordable housing and every piece of land now that we can develop and provide those home where people doesn't have to travel three hours away just to come here to work, to live here. I think it's important that we continue to do so. Thank you for having your project here right in San Jose. Thanks.
All right, thanks, councilmember. Councilor Batra?
I agree that we need the housing as much as we can get here. The question I have is, are those ADUs going to be sold to the different owners? Are they going to be part of the, like, are they behind the single family, so the ADU will be owned by the same people who own the main home?
I can only speak that we aren't making it required. It's not part of deed restricted, so it's really up to the applicant if they choose to, yeah, so.
Do you want to direct your question to the applicant?
Yeah.
Sure.
Really long time in the making, well before you were allowed to sell ADUs separately. So right now, there's no plan to sell them separately. It would just be to really support more likely multi-generational living.
All right, so we expect the families and the children, the younger generations starting to come and become part of the ADU. All right? That would be great. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the applicant for bringing this project to our beautiful city in San Jose. It's always a great opportunity to, you know, expand units in a great neighborhood in District One. And I had the opportunity to meet with the applicant and we reviewed the plan and definitely looks like something that'll be a nice addition to our city. So, thank you.
Great, agreed. Thanks, councilmember. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, Melanie, I was hoping you can come back down and maybe share a little bit. I know at the Planning Commission, there was a spirited conversation about the quality and look and I think the placement of the affordable units. And I'm wondering if you could just touch on that a little bit and give us your perspective. I read what was in the packet, but if you can.
Yeah, there was a very spirited discussion around the affordable units and about the compliance with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which interestingly, this project could fee out of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. So we have the, and that's why I was starting to say like this, the irony of it is that we're providing three bedroom units. These bedrooms are brand new, they're larger than most of the affordable housing units that are being built. They're in a development that is predominantly market rate in a neighborhood that is a market rate neighborhood predominantly. And so I understand that the units are different, but they are in the middle of the range of sizes too. We have ADUs, we have attached single families. So there is that range and that diversity. And so I think that these units are going to be very, very desirable to people that are looking for units that are deed restricted, and they are going to be affordable to very low and low income families.
Understanding as you highlighted, the applicant could have feed out and just paid the fee and not have built them, right, if you will? And so, but they decided to move forward and actually build them out?
Yes, I mean, so under SB 330, we were required to replace the units, meaning that you had to provide the same number of bedrooms, but there's no requirements on the size of the unit. So the development had to have affordable units on site. The real question is whether the applicant could use those units to satisfy the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance obligations. And those units are going to cost probably about $1 million to construct at $500 a square foot, or whether they would have to construct those units and pay an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance fee. And so you see in the HCD memos that were attached to Mr. Winter's letter, that that sort of double obligation is going to really take away the ability to actually provide affordable housing units. While it's a lofty goal, it's not practical.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilwoman Cohen?
I wasn't going to ask a question, but actually, since we have an opportunity, I'm going to ask one more question. Maybe it's for planning. These are, the state of California has an ordinance about solar on single family homes. Is that correct? So does these homes have to have solar on them? You could just nod, is the answer yes? Okay, good, thank you.
Great, thanks, councilmember. Well, look, I'll just add, I think it's consensus here, but I think it's a great project. And I think frankly, we should be finding ways to make it easier, faster, cheaper to deliver these kinds of mixed income infill projects. I think it's really thoughtfully designed. I'm sorry it's taken so long and been such a headache to get to this point, but it is a project I think we should be proud of and appreciate you all hanging in there and the fact that you're going to be delivering high quality housing at different income levels in a neighborhood that is resource rich in an area that is so desperate for more housing stock. So I'm very supportive. All right, I don't see any other hands, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right, we're on to our final agendized item. This is item 10.4. It's the designation of the Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park as a city landmark historic district. We have a brief staff presentation, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So my job is just to introduce Dana Peak, our Historic Preservation Officer, who will happily take you through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Dana Peak and I'm the Historic Preservation Officer for the city, principal planner in the Planning Department. We're here today because the city council initiated the historic district designation process on April 30th, 2024. The Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park neighborhood is located west of downtown San Jose. The neighborhood is accessed by three streets, Shealy, Harding, and Pershing avenues, and is bordered by the Alameda and Stockton Avenue. The neighborhood was listed on the Historic Resources Inventory as an eligible conservation area or candidate city landmark district by the Historic Landmarks Commission on June 3rd, 2020. Since that time, changes to the exterior properties in the neighborhood have been subject to the single family house permit process and review for conformance with the year old house guidelines. The city landmark designation would change that type of permit required to a historic preservation permit instead of a single family house permit. The proposed district contains 132 properties, 129 of them are residential, and three are converted to commercial use. The neighborhood consists of predominantly moderately sized one-story houses, typically on 6,000 square foot lots. The neighborhood consists of two adjacent subdivisions, the Shealy subdivision and Alameda Park subdivisions, which are interrelated in their historical development. They, it was constructed initially in an unincorporated area between San Jose and Santa Clara, the city of Santa Clara, since the area was not incorporated into the city until 1925. And it was built out by World War II, starting in the late 1880s. As I said at the beginning, the process was started by the San Jose City Council initiating designation on April 30th, 2024. Planning staff established a project website and held two community meetings, one on May 30th and one on June 13th, 2024. The Historics Landmark Commission held a public hearing on August 7th and recommended approval. And the Planning Commission held its public hearing by ordinance on August 28th and recommended The project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA under Section 15331 for the preservation of historical resources. Staff recommends that the city council find that the Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park is a geographically definable area of urban or rural character, possessing a significant concentration or continuity of site, buildings, structures, or objects unified by past events or aesthetically by plan or physical development, and that the city council adopt a resolution designating the Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park as a city historic landmark district. And that's the end of staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Let's go to public comment.
Okay, I'm going to call the names. When you hear a name, go ahead and call, come forward. First person to the microphone, step to the microphone. The other people that I called, the first row has reserved seats for you. I have Michael Rogers, Fafa Sivian, Feng Chi, and Edward Saum to start.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Rogers and I strongly oppose the historic district designation and I ask that you also vote against it. My wife and I bought our home on Pershing Avenue as our first home. After spending more than a decade moving to seven different states as an active duty Marine, we were finally able to set down roots here in the Bay Area where we both grew up. We made sure to buy a house that we could grow into as a family. However, this historic district designation would change that, moving the goalposts after we already committed to our home. If you look at the written public comments, there's a significant number of other residents who also do not wish to be subject to the significant amount of restrictions. We honor and respect the past, but this respect should not be at the expense of the present and more importantly, the future. If preservation is so important to my neighbors, why has only one home filed for protection under the Mills Act, according to city records? At a time when housing is limited, we should be encouraging current homeowners to improve and expand their homes. 132 individual homes and their families' livelihoods depend on this vote. Before voting, I would ask that you consider, have you actually been through this neighborhood? Have you looked at all of the houses? Many of the houses have already undergone significant renovations that move it past the significance labeled in the district's presentation, but those houses were notably absent from the presentations put forward in support. There are also homes that are outside of the historic feel and several of those homeowners voted or put forward their own support in comments. So those rules did not apply to them, but are going to apply to me. I have found that at least 18 homes have undergone renovations that will put them outside of the designated historic period, and they're the overly broad 53-year period that it also includes up to 20% are already of the homes outside of the historically significant period, which is a period mark.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Fafa. So due diligence was not done because of the lack in communication that is evident with, when talking to residents, but also by the single focus analysis presented throughout the process showing the tenured historical aspect of this project. This measure main contribution is to force homeowners to style guidelines that are deemed agreeable by a minority without bringing any significant value to the city. If the Shealy subdivision is deemed historical, the majority of the city of San Jose, Rose Garden, Villaglen, can ask the same based on this precedent. I have heard comments that it wouldn't happen because the people in the process would use their judgment to block such demand. If that were truly the case, the people involved in the process in the future should be given a voice now because their judgment is needed. For the economical aspect, having to renovate and maintain the house in the Shealy subdivision is expensive enough that the tax break and fee reduction are not enough to cover the cost of repair and maintenance. When we bought our home earlier this year, the bank deemed it unloanable. We had to fix foundation and had to retrofit for earthquake to be able to get the loan. For the environmental aspect, global warming and water scarcity were not issues San Jose citizens had to plan for. We're planning our home to be energy independent as much as possible, but in order to achieve that, we need to change so many things inside and outside, from the roof to foundation walls, windows. And based on our analysis we did, it would be better to rebuild than repair the unsafe house that is full with lead paint, asbestos. Some of the young people who are just started to building for their family, building their family, are not here today, they were at work. But I hope that you got their email. They asked me to be their voice. Being a good store for the city of San Jose, making the most of our city efficiently and properly, and providing safe environment for all.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Lauren Ogata, and the name starts with a Z, but I can't read the handwriting. So if your last name starts with a Z, you are also being called.
Probably you, Sally.
It could be that. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Edward Saum and I'll wear a few different hats in my 120 seconds. I'm the president and director for planning and land use for the Shasta Hancha Park Neighborhood Association, which happily includes the proposed district. 20 years of effort, passion, and meticulous research by Kay Guttenek and her neighbors has gone into this process. It was first proposed to then-councilmember Yeager in 2004. During her last two terms, councilmember Davis has been a true advocate for us as well, for which we are grateful. I was the chair of the city's Historic Landmarks Commission when the 132 parcels were placed on the HRI. The amount of work that Dana Peak put into the process is substantial. Similarly sized cities have six to 10 historic preservation officers. We have one. Thank you, Dana. The district includes 900 square foot bungalows, three-story multifamily Queen Anne and Victorian homes, and even some small houses that are used as small businesses. The variety of building types, uses, and styles reflects its history and is worthy of preservation. I live in a 1905 farmhouse about three blocks from the district. As an architect that both lives and works in the neighborhood, there are some important facts that need to be reiterated that have been kind of misinterpreted. The most affordable housing is the housing that already exists. The this old house guidelines clearly show how a two-story addition can be readily added to a historic resource. Single family house permits and historic preservation permits are readily obtainable by a design professional that does their due diligence. I have easily permitted additions to city landmarks and historic resources, and city staff is always willing to help. There are over 122,000 properties eligible for SB 9 in the city. To date, there have been perhaps, what, a dozen submittals? We're talking about 132 parcels out of 124,000 when you include historic resources. And the city is currently looking at how SB 9 style processes could be applied to historic resources. Both the HLC and the Planning Commission deem this designation appropriate. I therefore ask you to complete this 20-year process today. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Buying a home is part of the American dream. My husband and I worked hard to be able to buy our first home in San Jose, no less, in this neighborhood, a neighborhood with many old homes, but many homes that have already been remodeled. We are proud of our home and our accomplishments. Buying a home allowed us to put down roots and to claim a piece of this world for ourselves. And while we are proud of our home, that's not to say there are not renovations and things that need to be done. Our front windows are original, they're not energy efficient, there are cracks in our stucco, there is no gate to prevent somebody from walking up my driveway and accessing my side door into my home. Our homes are places that we go to to seek comfort and to feel safe. It is a place where you can relax, and we should be able to do to our homes what we want and need to do to feel, are sent, to feel comfortable and secure. A yes vote on this proposal would severely limit our ability to do just that. The restrictions and regulations that come with the historic designation severely burden us and are financially prohibitive. A yes vote would hinder my ability to do things to my home that many neighbors have already done, including installing new windows. The cost to put in windows that are compliant with this designation are at least five times what it costs for new windows. A yes vote would impact my ability to place a gate and make myself feel safe at home. A yes vote would essentially be telling me and my husband that despite working hard and buying this home, we don't deserve to feel safe and secure in our home, and that you, the council members, know better than we do what it would take for us to feel safe and secure. And I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, next speaker. I'm also going to call Meredith Muller. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sally Zarnowitz. I live in District Nine in a historic district, the Fair Glen additions, the Eichler neighborhood. We were designated as a national We were designated as a national registered district in two thousand and nineteen, and we haven't had really any complaints that I know of in my neighborhood about how to do work on our homes. The Secretary of the Interior's standards are really clear about how to generally allow these historic homes to be lived in. Of course, they need to be maintained, and of course, as a city, we want them to be maintained. And so I think that that's something that's completely feasible, as Ed was talking about, as an architect, as a homeowner, that there are ways to do that, that maintain the character or retain the character of the neighborhood, but also allow for growth, ADUs, additions, et cetera. And I did want to thank you for the memo from the mayor, the vice mayor, and other council members supporting this designation. You know, it's so important to continue the survey work of the city, and when that is submitted and funded by residents, that's kind of a win-win, and to continue to use the tools that we have in front of us during this time. Also to use the incentives, by the way, the state historical building code, potentially Mills Act, these are all savings that, you know, they're from nineteen seventies, the Mills Act, to allow the preservation of these homes. So I urge you to vote yes on this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down, it looks like Deborah Meela.
My name's Meredith. I live on Shealy Avenue. I've lived there, I was born and raised there. I now rent the home from my parents, and in a time far away, I will own the home. I've done a lot of work on the home myself with my own hands. I've hand-stuffed insulation in the walls, I've hand-milled the wood framing around windows and doors, and I recently, in the pandemic project, tore out an apartment and rebuilt it and renovated it, and it's now rented. And those sorts of projects are part of homeownership and part of the advantages of having something to call your own, and in no point in that process did I do something that was not historically sort of valid, and it was never more expensive or more cumbersome than doing it the fast and cheap, hermetically sealed way of new construction. I'm really pleased that we have the support of our councilperson and really assured that the support of my neighbors, having worked for this for so long, will result in a, in a strong yes from all of you, and I hope that you can help allow us to continue to steward the homes in ways that are responsible and not overly restrictive. I think I have twenty-five more seconds. Repair, don't replace. Everybody deserves to be able to fix things as opposed to tear them down and build them anew, and as we vote for that in other spheres, we can think about how that is in our homes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call Matt Palercio and Rolf Doming.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Mealy, and I've lived on Shealy Avenue for forty years. When we first moved there, the Alameda was a mess. Shealy wasn't much better. The house we bought didn't even have a foundation, had a mudsill, we had asbestos shingles, we had lead pipes, we had cracked walls, we had cracked sidewalks. Living and owning an old house is not for wimps, believe me. It's amazing, though, what forty years of hard work and perseverance can do in a neighborhood. I've counted over twenty homes on Shealy Avenue that have been renovated, rehabbed, and restored, and I've documented a few of them in a letter I sent to you, so I hope you were able to review that. Please do not let our efforts be in vain. I strongly believe that we should not sacrifice the old in order to make way for the new. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Matt Palercio. That was my wife. We've lived on Shealy Avenue for forty years. In nineteen eighty-four, we bought an eighteen nineties house, that is, my wife just said, was sitting in the dirt, no foundation. But I looked through the neighborhood, and even though things were pretty sad, I saw that it had potential, but it was skating on really thin ice. So what has happened over this past forty years can only be described as nothing short of a miracle, because the late eighties and nineties, I would go out and salvage old house parts in many, many neighborhoods, older neighborhoods of San Jose, and I would find these old homes that were rented to death, boarded up, and then broken into and set on fire. That has never happened in our neighborhood, though it could have. Over the years, one by one, I've watched these houses, as my wife just mentioned, get fixed up and restored, to a point where maybe ninety percent of the houses or more in our neighborhood are in very, very good shape. A walk through our neighborhood today would be a walking through architectural history that goes back between ninety-five and one hundred and thirty years. That's why I support the preservation of this miracle neighborhood that is no longer on thin ice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Joanne Buckley and Mike Sotegren.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I first like to acknowledge and thank all the historians and preservationists who have dedicated twenty-plus years of hard work to get us to this very moment. The efforts to preserve a hundred-plus-year-old thriving neighborhood with canopy tree-lined streets, long driveways, detached garages, and unique architectural features make this twenty-five acre patch of land special. When my wife and I were searching for a home to buy, we purposely sought out an older neighborhood because we dreamed of owning a historical home that we could preserve. We feel very fortunate that we bought into this neighborhood twelve years ago and fully support this historical designation. I've been present at the outreach events to hear from the panels and people in the community. Even though some have concerns with the idea to give our neighborhood a historical designation, things like building ADUs and making home additions are still allowed, while simultaneously finding ways to support affordable housing nearby is also possible. Over the years, I've witnessed one-story bungalows transformed that still blend well with the other houses in the neighborhood, but there have been other homes completely demolished. When things like this happens, it muddles the architectural integrity of the community that I believe should be maintained as best as possible. I've also witnessed examples of affordable housing intensification efforts over the years, with new apartment buildings developed locally on Stockton Avenue closer to transit centers as intended for long-term urban planning. In closing, as we reflect on this moment, I see this historical designation as a tribute to the area, providing the opportunity to maintain a relatively small patch of land with respect to the greater area of San Jose, helping to balance the old with the new for many generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Joanne Buckley. I have lived in this historic area, and I moved in in nineteen seventy-two. And I can tell you, over the years, I have seen dramatic changes that improved this area so much. We live in this beautiful garden. It's just a jewel along the Alameda and between that and Stockton Avenue. I raised my children there. I did all the work on the house myself. I stripped things, I fixed things, I dug out the stuff in the windows and replaced it, and I see other residents doing the same thing. We are very proud of this neighborhood. We respect the people that came before us. We want to honor all the work that the architects did to provide us with this beauty. Every single home is individually designed and unique. The colors of the paint are beautiful. I hope that before today, you had a chance to just drive through this area and appreciate it the way we do. There's a lot of misinformation out there about what happens with repairs and things like that, and I want the people in the audience to understand that the planning department works with you. You can do any renovation you want inside your house. If you build an extension on the back, all it has to do is sort of mimic what it looks like in the front from the fascia. You can have fencing. I have fencing and gates. So there's a lot of things that people don't understand. Another thing, instead of replacing your windows completely, you can put double-pane windows on top of them. They look perfectly beautiful, and it retains the same character that you have right now. So I appeal to all of you that this means so much to us and to me and my family. Please say yes and pass this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call down Matthew Mulholland and Ben.
Rafa Domingo. Hi, I'm Rafa Domingo, and I live on Harding Avenue, and I got to say, Sally and the previous group, really, you know, everybody so far has kind of given a pretty good view of what my neighborhood's like, our neighborhood's like. And I love history, I'm an urban trekker, it's got everything for me. There's nothing like going for a walk down my street with the sick of Mars as my canopy. It's just beautiful. And also, I've managed, my wife and I, to put an addition to our house, and I hired an architect I was familiar with the neighborhood, and I made it clear to him that I wanted to complement the architecture that existed in our neighborhood, and he did. And I never thought, I've worked internationally from a lot of different places, and I never thought I would retire in San Jose on Harding Avenue. And, you know, please approve the historical status. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mike Sotegren, Preservation Action Council. I could come before you and offer comments in recognition and respect for sort of the comments, the range of comments we've seen. We are blessed to live in a city that is full of staff that care. Whether you're putting solar panels on your roof, or you're dealing with, how do you deal with a historic preservation project, you guys, you guys are leading a staff that's high caliber, and so I would just encourage those that are concerned about this that they continue to reach out to the city and expect that they will, they will have an expression of response of compassion in terms of the concerns that they have. We do support this initiative. We thank you. As you close out your term, we just think you didn't have to do it, and you did it, and we're very proud of you for doing it, and thank you for gathering up the support of your peers in that process. We really appreciate it, Dev. One of the things that we wanted to say is, for those that fear that somehow this will stifle growth or impend their ability to actually get the work done that they need to do on their home, we do not believe that that is correct. We do believe that there's plenty of evidence that that is not the case. I just want to read one thing, because the first time this came to council, there were a lot of concerns about equity, and so I want to quote one of the letters that you received. "At the time the neighborhood was developed, the Alameda was the site of huge estates for the wealthy. Both the Shealy subdivision and Alameda Park were developed to give people of moderate means a chance to live right off the Alameda." I also want to add that Commissioner Cantrell, Vice Chair, said that, and I did not know this, that there is a very large African-American community that lives there that made this place their home, and so show the respect to them.
Thank you. Next speaker, and I'm going to call my last card, which is Kay.
I live on Shealy Avenue, and I am one of the original four property owners that started this process back in two thousand and four. The endeavor has absolutely been a labor of love, and it ultimately resulted in an application package of hundreds of pages that went to the planning department, but without Dev, we would not be here today. So I just want to say how grateful we are that she believes in us, and she believes our neighborhood is worth preserving for the city's future. The Shealy subdivision in Alameda Park is a beautiful, walkable, community-facing neighborhood where you can easily imagine life in an earlier time. The land on which it sits has an incredibly rich history that encapsulates much of the city's history overall, and it's a neighborhood that's occupied by singles, couples, families, and with a racial mix that closely mirrors that of the city overall. The neighborhood is predominantly single-family homes, but mixed in with this home, with those homes are also duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. We have county subsidized housing in our neighborhood, and we have an ever-increasing number of ADUs. So it offers a living alternative to the numerous high-density housing projects that are planned and have already been built to the south of us. So today, you have a unique opportunity to create what would be the city's fifth residential historic district. It'd be the first in seventeen years. It'll be the first located outside of the downtown core, and it will be the first to feature revival architecture. So I support the designation. I ask that you do also, and remember, please, that a historic resource, once lost, can never be replaced. Thank you.
Okay, I've called all speakers, so if you submitted a card and you didn't hear your name, please come on down.
Okay.
I see no movements. Back to council.
Great. Thank you all so much for waiting through a long meeting to express your opinions. I'm going to turn to my colleague, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I, first, I want to thank all the, all the people who came out to speak, and I especially want to thank Kay and Dana for, for all their work. Kay's work started twenty years ago, and as she said, with a small group of neighbors. And Dana, I just want to thank you for bringing this one over the finish line. Very helpful. It was stuck for a little while. These neighbors just wanted to preserve the architectural heritage of their neighborhood and the city of San Jose, and you've heard, you've heard a lot already about what this neighborhood's history represents, and you've also gotten a book from, from Kay and her co-author about the neighborhood, and with individual pictures of, of the homes in the neighborhood and, and a lot of different things. So you've, you've kind of heard it all already. You've also heard that, that some of the homes have already been scraped and, and not just, not just remodeled, but, but really, the, as, as Kay said, the, the history's gone for some of those sites, and it is, it is in a very walkable area of the city, so there, there is that need to continue to preserve these, actually, small homes. And they, they are able to be, to be remodeled and to be added on to, but in the, the, the ones that are still small are actually able to be afforded by, by families just starting out, which I think is great. So with that, I'd like to move the mayor, move the memo authored by myself, the mayor, the vice mayor, council member Foley, and council member Candellis. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, council member. Just pausing for a moment. Don't see any other hands. Okay, delay it as long as I can for colleagues in the back. Let's vote.
I hear doors. And I'm going to assume Cohen won't be able to make it out in time, so.
Yeah, that could take a while. Sure he'll survive without voting. All right, Tony.
I could end it.
Councilmember, are you, are you an aye or an nay?
Aye.
All right.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Tony. Okay, thank you all. We are on open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Do we have any cards for open forum?
We have one in the box, we're grabbing it.
We have, looks like, one card.
Oh, Mike Sotegren.
Quick parting comment. This is not specific to the agenda, but related. We have gone to Historic Landmarks Commission repeatedly and requested that some resourcing comes behind information for the public on what it means when your property falls into some sort of level of historic designation, because it does cause concern, it does cause fear, and it would be really great if one of the council members would put some shoulder behind that, and more importantly, to show the public what grants and opportunities to do some of the repairs that you would have in a house that was designated can be funded through Mills Act or some other vehicle. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your work.
Back to council.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Thanks, colleagues. We are adjourned.